Thank you so much. Thanks.
You ready, Mike?
Sorry, I haven't turned all of this.
Uh-oh.
All right, I'll exit out of there.
Yeah.
All done.
Just about one minute, hopefully. Just about one minute, hopefully. Oh, no, go ahead, it's just happening. Yeah. No. American English. Okay. Okay, sorry.
You good?
Yes.
Okay, I will call the November October meeting of Dublin City Council back to order. Mike, could you please on the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, I guess we weren't, didn't call us back for order because we were never in order before, so Ian, could you please call the roll?
Should Mr. Keenan? Vice Mayor Amos Grooms? Yeah, Mr. Reiner?
Here.
Mr. Rosa?
Here.
Mr. Mayor Peterson?
Here.
And Ms. Fox.
Good evening, everyone. Special recognition and presentations, Columbus Met Ball and Library, our friend Patrick Lisinski. Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson, members of council, city manager McDaniel, and staff, here to give you an update on the construction and fundraising of the new Dublin branch. I know you are driving by and seeing lots of excitement. It is really moving along, and we are starting to give tours to community members, and it's certainly a wall factor for them. Not too long ago, we were all together for this groundbreaking effort, I'm sorry, wall breaking effort is what we called it that evening. And just as a reminder for our timetable, we're still conducting our fundraising effort through the spring of 2019, and still planning on a May, probably late May 2019 dedication. So what I'm sure you know is just a few images of under construction, as well as some architectural images of what the space will look like. So you see the welcome zone into the library, leading to the two-story stairs and atrium Next is when the lower level, and that is as enter on the corner of Rock Crest and High, right across from the new pedestrian bridge. That will be the entrance area to not only the café, but to a series of meeting rooms that are available, great flexibility around those spaces. And then as you walk up those steps, there are a series of what we call porches, which will be flat areas, which we think will be exciting spaces. People will really gravitate because it is a place to see and be seen along High Street. The children's area, the children's and young minds remains our top priority for the library district as a whole, and so we are really stepping up our children's area. You see a ready-for-kindergarten area, as we've talked to Dr. Hodley about some of the efforts they face with English as a second language. Preschoolers who are in the district, that is an area that we believe we can help them with a great deal. When you get finally to the second floor, which is the largest collection of the adult books, as well as the adult seating area, it also has afforded some of the best views of the surrounding community. In particular, I just want to commend the city because I know city manager McDaniel and team worked with the veterans on the grounds of remembrance, and that is just such a handsome space. And as you walk through, it's going to be so visible from the first and second floor of the library, and then, of course, looking toward the pedestrian bridge as well. The plaza is part of the overall program that is funded. Just in case there is any misunderstanding of where we are, the total project budget includes the full development of the plaza, as well as the icon area for the signature transition element that we've worked on. We want to point out to you the names of the Dublin Branch Fundraising Committee, and this is a group that has really worked very hard and really come together. You see our two chairs, Dr. Carol Clinton and Sid Romberg. They've really done a great job of bringing this entire team together, and I can tell you that folks are energized and working hard. We have a committee meeting this week, and I'll give you a total in terms of where we are so far. So the total project is 21.1 million, with 18.3 million in public funding and 2.8 million in our private fundraising efforts. To date, we're closing in on about 850,000 that has been raised, so we do have some work in front of us to reach our goal of 2.8 million. But I'm confident as people begin to see the library and have chances to tour it, it's going to be inspirational to some of our donors moving forward. So our fundraising efforts include naming opportunities, and we just want to give you some examples of what some naming opportunities have looked like in other district locations. We have one district where someone had named the building after them, that is in the New Albany branch. It is still the New Albany Community Library, however. And then you see naming examples for certain dollar amounts, larger areas of the library, and exclusive recognition areas. And then for some of our smaller donors, we have some shared naming opportunities as well, where under one sign, we will have multiple donors listing. So tonight, I would tell you, I want to extend an invitation. I hope we are able to coordinate a hard hat tour for you quickly, because it's a chance to not only see the library, but to see the parking garage and what is taking shape on the entire block. And then, not necessarily a working suggest, a working session tonight, but really to ask you for any thoughts that you have offline about suggested campaign contacts that may be able to help us with the fundraising. We will have an event coming up in early December where we have four, and we hope five, area CEOs are going to hold a C-level event, and that is really to bring the businesses into the overall program. All of them have contributed so far to the effort, and it's all about telling their peers about the opportunity. So with that, let me stop and see if you have questions for me this evening.
Thank you, Pat. Any questions from council? Kathy, go ahead.
When I drive by there, it seems to get more real every day, so congratulations on that, that's good news. As you're doing your fundraising, are there certain examples of things, in addition to naming other programs, that you guys have done, or other ideas about potential fundraising activities or efforts, rather than what we talked about may have been more the traditional naming and that type of thing? I'm just looking for ideas that we might suggest or share with folks that are interested in, you know...
Well, I think that's where the, even though we're talking about it and the comments are being streamed, we think of ourselves as being still somewhat in the quieter phase because the effort really requires us to try to get some of the six-figure gifts locked down first. Otherwise, it's really an extended campaign. There will be a time when it is a very public and very open campaign where we're looking for all levels of donors to participate in that effort as well. That's sort of the final phase.
Pat, I saw in the paper you guys won an architect, one of your other branches won an architectural award.
So that was, it was actually two within the last couple of weeks. The Shepherd branch received an honor award from the Ohio American Institute of Architects, and last week, the Northside branch won the Ritchie Award for the top architectural effort in the city for last year, and that's of note because that is the architect, that's NBBJ, that is designing this library as well.
So when do we get our award, Pat? Is what I want to know.
I will ask that question of the principal when I get back.
I would imagine it has to get finished before they...
It does, yes.
All right. We were anxiously awake. Great, thank you for coming in. We really appreciate all your efforts. Fantastic. Go ahead.
Thank you. If I could just make one more point, because I know some of the team members you know that are with us, but Allison Circle, who leads our design efforts on behalf of the team that works with the architects. We also have Joe Yersovich, who is the new Dublin branch manager, and I think is making great strides in the community and being present. And then Nikki Scarpetti, our strategic initiatives director. We had a maternity leave, so Nikki filled in and is continuing as the lead fundraising contact. So I know many of you know Nikki, but I want to make sure that she's introduced so that any contacts may be able to given, be given to her as well. So thank you so much.
Fantastic. You got a great team assembled, Pat, so good luck.
All right, thank you.
Thanks for everything. Appreciate you coming in. Moving on to Scott. Where's Scott? There he is. Scott's talking to Pat. Scott, drink.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Thank you for the opportunity. If I may too, I'd like to introduce our two city council reps, Phil Smith and Frank Wilson back there. And I'd like to go, in the five minutes I want to spend with you guys, I really want to focus on just talking about the additional funding that council provided us three years ago, and give you the return on investment and results only from that additional funding. And I'll show you here at the end of the presentation. For every dollar you spent, about 13 was generated as a result of that. So if you recall, many of you were part of this, in November of 2015, council provided an additional 10%, or increased our percentage from 25% to 35% of the bed tax. And at that time, our industry as a whole came with that request because of several needs. One, because of increased competition, the new product that was coming online, and we really felt it was time, after 27 years of getting the 25%, that we needed to kind of make an investment to position us for success in the future. We promised four things to council as part of that proposal. One was to create a regional marketing effort, attract new meeting corporate business to the area, raise the city's profile, and ensure downtown Dublin's success, which at that time had just broken ground in the Bridge Park area as well. Historically, the bureau, for the first 27 years before this happened, we really marketed Dublin within the state of Ohio, because of the funds we had. We did it fairly successfully, very successfully, but we found that several years before this that we really had plateaued in terms of our occupancy during this timeframe. So we felt we needed to increase market share, increase visitation by expanding our marketing efforts to try to attract visitors beyond just the state of Ohio. So we created a marketing campaign that went from April through August in these four key regional markets, Detroit, Indianapolis, Charleston Huntington, and Pittsburgh. And one measure that we do is through occupancy. That's the top-line measure, how many people are coming to Dublin. And you all have heard of occupancy rates. A hotel has 100 rooms, 75 of the rooms are filled, it's 75% occupancy. So let's take a look at the results on weekdays for the campaign. So you can see 2012, 13, 14, 15, during April-August timeframe during the campaign, it was really flat, 73%. When our campaign started in 2016, 17, a dramatic increase of over 5% increase in occupancy points. So what does that mean? What does 5% occupancy translate into? That's 22,000, and these are real numbers. These are projections, these are actually real hardcore numbers. That's 22,000 hotel room nights. So if you and your family stay one night on a Friday night, that's one room night. So you can tell the dramatic increase in, increase of visitation, over $2.5 million in hotel revenue. And I'll get on my soapbox for a second again, and you've heard me say that a visitor impact in our community, that the hotel revenue is a small piece of that pie. We've all been on vacation, business trips. When you go out, you spend money on restaurants, shopping, maybe an adult beverage here and there. That impact is far greater than just a hotel room revenue, which translates to jobs, which translates to economic impact, or income tax revenue for the city of Dublin. Looking at weekdays during that same timeframe for our campaign, again, it was flat the previous four years, dramatically increased, almost six percentage points through April and August after the campaign was launched there. And again, what does that mean? That's 8,000 room nights. Keep in mind, weekends, we're only talking about 44 days in that timeframe, so it's not as many days as weekdays. But that's almost $840,000 in new hotel room revenue. Naysayers out there might say, "Well, maybe we saw that increase the whole year. We took a snapshot of the campaign to kind of prove our point." If you look at the months that there was no campaign, that's January through March and September through December, relatively flat in 16, 17. So I think the message here is the increase in market share, the visitation that we saw was a direct result coming from that April through August timeframe as well. And if you go one more step further, bed tax revenue, which is also very important to all of us, you can see during that timeframe, dramatic increase from 14 to 15 to 16 and 17. The other thing that we promised council at that time is we would increase new business travel to the community. And for the first time in 15 years, with additional funding, we were able to hire a national sales manager, increase our staff one. And these are the results from that staff hiring, almost 8,000 room nights. She's brought in 101 new conferences and trade shows to the community, over two and a half mil, almost two and a half million dollars in total revenue and leads as well. Raising city profile was important to us, and I think some of the things are tough to really get ROI on, but I think we would all agree, you know, having Dublin's name in the USA Today, Wall Street Journal, and news stations across the country, you know, is tremendously impactful, not only for us, is the tour's a message, but for maybe future business, future residents, and so forth. And we had a lot of success doing these through TV shows, and I have a little sampling. Now, this is going to work or not, Nick. If I double-click here to show you, it's really 30-second montage.
Right, so St. Patrick's Day is tomorrow, and we are ready to celebrate.
One of the things we're really excited about is our new Celtic cocktail trail.
Good, so Jess, make us a drink.
The largest three-day Irish festival in the world.
Just up the street from us here in Cincinnati, in Dublin, Ohio. See how you do one of your caramel apples here? You're going to make one...
Look at that.
To Dublin for St. Patrick's Day. We're talking about Dublin, Ohio. This is what the drink looks like when it's all done, right? The Liffey Cooler. Look at how beautiful this is.
We are in the kitchen next, previewing the Dublin Irish Festival.
In Dublin, every day is Irish for us. We also have the Dublin Irish Festival coming up this weekend.
Sunday is International Fairy Day, and you can celebrate the magical holiday at the Irish Fairy Door Trail in Dublin.
It's actually a great way to see our local Dublin businesses as well.
The Irish celebrations continue.
It's really everything you can think of to celebrate Irish culture in Dublin, Ohio.
And one of the things that we're super excited about is our brand-new Celtic cocktail trail.
You can use any Irish whiskey if you like, so we'll do an ounce and a quarter of that, and there you go.
So that gives you an idea that the impact, again, those are just a sampling of clips that we were able to secure across the region. I think one really cool aspect of this side benefit is you saw a lot of these small businesses in Dublin. We were able to bring them with us, 101 Beer Kitchen, Village, Dublin Village Tavern, Basso, many, many others that we brought with them at no cost to them, that there's no way they could have ever done it on their own if it wasn't with us bringing them. So again, it not only raised awareness of Dublin, but a lot of these small businesses in the community as well. And then finally, we promised downtown Dublin, we would work hard to really extend the marketing dollars and marketing reach with that. Eight, the exchange, you know, these are some of the meetings we've already booked in the last year. So the bus tours are hugely successful in historic Dublin. You know, those, each bus has about 40 to 50 travelers and visitors walking up and down historic Dublin, spending money in Bridge Park as well, so that's been impactful as well, and the Fairy Door Trail and so forth. And we talked last time about the strategic alliance. So there's your 13 to 1. Again, you know, we could have hired a marketing or research firm, no offense to research firm, and paid them a lot of money to come up with some fancy formula to really have some crazy ROI number, but this 13 to 1 dollar is purely the numbers I just gave you from what the bureau has generated the last three years with the result of your additional funding that you provided us three years ago. So...
By any standard, a very wise investment.
Thank you.
As far as I'm concerned. Questions?
Scott, I wanted to ask you, so you've seen this campaign work, you've heard people come in and talk about Dublin. If you had a, if I gave you three wishes about what we could do to even help bring more people in here, what would your three wishes be?
More people. So on a business side, I think meeting space is one thing. You know, we have three full-serve hotels, and the exchange is great. The exchange is great for weddings and such, but I think we're a little tapped out in terms of the size of trade show. You've all gone on trade shows and size of business we could bring. Weekend business is probably our biggest time of need right now, so we're working hard, not only messaging, but trying to figure out, you know, athletic events is a huge deal. A lot of us have kids and have gone to baseball tournaments and such, you know the impact of that. So trying to figure out the balance between myself being a resident, how we can kind of slot in with Dari and Avery Fields and other great facilities in town and bring events, that's probably another big wish. And just extending the marketing message of such, we have such great product here in town, such great small businesses, helping them get the message out and the experience, that's what people want, is they want unique experiences. And I think we're working hard to create those experiences with our partners, but I think, you know, doing something like that and continuing to push that out just makes Dublin such a unique difference, destination that is going to really help in the future.
Is there a particular mix? I know our historic Dublin is losing a few retail stores, you know, that sort of thing. So the experience of going into historic Dublin is damp, dampened down just a little bit because we've lost a few. Any particular kind of entity that you would like to see that would create the experience? We've got great entertainment experience on the east side, but on the west side, you know, wishlist there.
No, I think we've done, through the, working close with HTBA, you know, over the past several years, we've created some unique Irish experiences that, especially these bus tours.
Okay.
You know, when they come out of the bus, they just don't want to walk up and down. They want, you know, we actually have set up Irish experiences, you know, penny whistle lessons, and how to do Irish dancing, and so we've actually created some tangible experiences that these people can conceive firsthand and do as well. So I think we're on our way with that wish. I think it's just a matter of kind of fine-tuning it and getting more out there.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
You do a fabulous job.
Thank you.
And tell your, your team and your staff that they do.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yeah, on the Cobra thing, and I read their email back to us, they're going to come here now and lodge in our city. Are they going to move their entire event here too, or no?
They are, the event, so...
The whole event's moving now after all these years, the Dublin?
Yeah, yeah. So Councilman Reiner, thank you, he gave us a lead a couple of weeks ago about a Cobra car show that's been, I think it was in Grove City, I don't know, different part of the state of Ohio. And it's a huge event. It brings over 150, 200 cars to the area, and they've moved that after 17 years, they've moved it to Dublin. And it's going to generate, what, 500, 700 room nights for the area, great economic impact as well. So, yeah, anytime you want to give us leads, please, we'll jump on it and try to, try to secure it.
Yeah, I knew they were going to give us the heads and beds, but then I thought they were going to go back to their normal town, where, you know, they roar up and down the streets and have control of it. But I didn't, wasn't sure if they're moving their entire production here.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Yeah, I know we get rooms, to your point, we're getting rooms, that's for sure.
Cool.
All right, thank you. Thanks, John. Anything else? Kathy?
Are we able to tell in these different regions where you've reached out and done marketing?
Yep.
The return on that sort of regionally, or is that too difficult to arrive at? Do we know, say, from Charlotte Market, what we've learned or...
It's hard for a visitation of hotels because hotels don't share their zip codes and addresses to their customers. But from awareness standpoint, from social media, we can tell what markets people are coming from in terms of accessing our website, our social media. So we can correlate during our campaign, we have, see a huge spike in Pittsburgh, and huge spike in, and actually even to the, to the weekend, and we have a huge media buy this weekend, you can come in Monday and see the spike to the interest that comes to getting information. But to, to your point, it's difficult getting the actual hardcore data because we have to rely on the hotels to give us that information.
So more regions in the future, or...
Well, those four are bread and butter. I mean, we, we actually had a present today, presentation today from experienced Columbus, Brian Ross, and they're hitting Chicago really hard, but Chicago's a really expensive market, you guys, you can imagine, to my advertising market in, but that might be something down there, what we look at as well.
Any other questions from council?
Thank you very much for coming in, Scott. You do a great job. We really appreciate it.
Dublin City Schools are going to join us momentarily after they can get here from the meeting, but we're going to move on with the rest of the agenda until they get here, which brings us to citizen comments. Tiffany Roberts? Welcome.
Hi, my name is Tiffany Roberts, and I'm running for Union County Commissioner. Thank you for giving me a few minutes to introduce myself to you guys. I'm the current co-president of Dublin Jerome PTO. I've got sophomore and junior daughters there, and I'm running for county commissioner because we need a voice where we are. We are what makes Union County the fastest-growing county in Ohio. In addition to giving a voice to our part of Union County, I also want to bring more accessibility to, accessibility to and transparency for the commissioner's office. Currently, the meeting agendas are released 18 hours before the meeting, which does not give working people enough opportunity to make arrangements to come to weekday morning meetings. So I'd also like to see the meetings livestreamed or televised so that people can actually see what's going on. The third thing I'd like to do for the transparency is to incorporate the Ohio checkbook, which is the online resource where people can see the, every penny that comes in and out of the office. As a resident of an underrepresented part of Union County, I feel like I can reach out to all the underrepresented parts of Union County that feel neglected without having representation with all of the commissioners being in Marysville. We've got rural farmers who struggle with internet connectivity. We've got Marysville residents who have tried to go to meetings at the commissioner's office and have found doors locked and lights off, and they have canceled or postponed meetings without any public notice whatsoever. And then the residents down here are concerned about the rapid growth and just want to make sure that it's sustainable and healthy. I'm not the only mother of a 17-year-old who doesn't let my kid turn left on Highland Cruy because we're worried about traffic. As a former social worker, I would love to get in and help with the opioid crisis that everyone's facing. I will be a full-time commissioner dedicated to working for every resident of Union County, and I would greatly appreciate everyone's support and vote. Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Tiffany. We appreciate it very much. Good luck to you.
Thank you.
Now, we have two different sign-in sheets. One's about anything you want to talk about, and the other thing's about agenda items. So I need to ask Linda Kik, where are you, Linda? Did you want to talk about, it just says historic district. Is that general historic district, or were you talking about one of the pieces of legislation that we have later on in the agenda? So is it okay with you if I just get to you when we...
Absolutely.
Okay. Consent agenda, there's only one item, so I'm going to go ahead and move that we approve the meeting minutes of September 24, 2018. Is there a second?
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amos Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
I'm Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Tabled items. Dana?
Good evening, members of council. Thank you again for taking the time this evening to come together as a finance committee of the whole...
to come together as a finance committee, the whole, just prior to this meeting, and talking about the proposed capital improvement plan for 2019 through 2023. I think that meeting was very productive, helped us to understand where it is you would like to go next. So we will come before you or get to you the information at your next meeting. So we're requesting a postponement of this to your next meeting so that we can bring the information back that you requested.
Do I have to make a motion, General? I make a motion that we postpone the tabled item forty-seven dash eighteen.
I'll second it.
Ann?
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Second reading public hearings on ordinances, ordinance sixty-five dash eighteen. Ann?
Amending chapter thirty-five with the codified ordinance that should revise the fee and service charge revenue slash cost comparison system and establishing a schedule of fees and service charges for City of Dublin services.
Matthew?
Good evening, council. Ordinance sixty-five dash eighteen is unchanged from the first hearing. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions from council?
I just have one. In looking at the fee schedule, and it happened this year that we had someone rent the park, like for a festival and that sort of thing. I did not see any line item, and maybe Matt could explain, or whoever. I didn't see any line item for that. So I just wondered if that was one of the fees that was addressed.
Okay. It's apparently a permitting fee, not a rental fee, and it's not currently in the cost study.
Right. I just, the only reason I wondered about it is because of the, you know, when you have that many people in the park, and it was right before the Irish Festival, I just worried about the damage to the park, the cost of having that many people in the park, and whether or not, whether or not that was a consideration this year because we didn't have any kind of a schedule for renting the park before. I just wondered how you're going to deal with that in the future.
Yeah, any event of that size or any permit that's required does go before a committee. We have met recently to discuss the impact not just on the park, but its staffing as well, and the level of service we can provide or not provide based on the need. So it is a conversation we have regularly, and we've discussed this one in particular.
Are all those permitting fees the same regardless if you're utilizing community facilities or not? Is there a permit fee that would involve the occupation of a park versus a permit fee that might be, I'm thinking of the auto show over in Metro. Is it the same fee both, under both instances?
Our permitting structure is based on a three-tiered system. Those tiers are based on the level of service required. For instance, if we have to shut down a roadway, it's going to require police and our streets staff to make that happen, which is in and above what we would normally do for a smaller event at a park. So it is tiered for that exact reason.
So cost of services are built-ins, what I'm hearing? The cost of services?
Yes. That is always, also factored into the, they are to, we are to recover all city services costs, and then there's a permit fee separate from that.
And is that permit fee based on the size, like zero to a hundred, hundred to two hundred?
Not necessarily on that, as much as it is the scope at which the event happens or occurs, the timing of it, the amount of staff required, the amount of time and effort that it has to go through the vetting process and so forth. All of those things are considered. Some of that is subjective, but most of it is based on the fact that every event is different, and every event needs to be vetted on the basis of which it is applied.
Any other questions from council? Kathy?
Yes, thank you. I know last time when we talked about the rec center fees and the reality that over about the last decade, we really haven't moved those fees at all. And now we're taking a twenty percent jump across the board. Here we go. And I stressed last time that I was concerned about doing all of that jump in one move. I think my fellow council members didn't agree with me necessarily on that. But I think that is an important thing that we explain to the residents that this increase is for maintenance. So I guess a question, Angel, and a request. The question is that these fee increases will be, and I'm going to use the word reserved, I don't know, is that the correct word, that they will be used for maintenance and rebuilding and whatever, you know, upkeep and replacement of the recreational facilities? And is that, I'm getting a hit on that.
Yeah, so they'll be encumbered.
Yes, that's correct. They'll be encumbered, okay. And then secondly, my request would be that on the bills, the fee structure that residents pay, that that's outlined on those fee structures, and that is identified on there, so that residents fully understand that we're not taking a twenty percent increase, that in fact, this is really for the ongoing maintenance of facilities for our community. Is that, is that a feasible thing, and is that something my fellow council members would like to do?
Yes. We will work with community information to make sure that we're putting that message out.
And actually, on what they pay, the bill that they pay, that it is clearly identified that that is a fee. I know the daily passes, that's a little different animal, I understand. But is that?
It can be invoiced that way as far as that.
I'm sorry, Mike?
It can be invoiced accordingly.
That's what I was asking, so that, you know, folks do see that that's what this...
It's, that sounds very easy, and I wish that it was. Implementing that, I mean, we're creating a policy at a high level to recover the funding necessary to meet your policy goals. And at that high level, it's very easy to administer that. We can find, we can identify the funds, we can put them in a fund, we can point to them on our reports. That can all happen very easily. Identifying on an individual service level and then on an individual receipt might be more difficult, and it is, it is more difficult.
It's not, it's not twenty percent across the board. It's twenty percent on the resident
fees for annual passes. But for instance, the non-resident daily pass went from seven to fifteen.
I said the daily ones, I understand from a daily perspective that that's not, but I, I want residents to understand.
Why don't you see what's feasible?
That would be great.
Perhaps you could just put it at the bottom of every invoice that the fee increases is reflective of blah, 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 blah. All of those dollars will be earmarked for improvements, whatever, so on and so forth.
Notification, absolutely. I just don't think we can split the dollar figures out at a transactional level. But I think we can create a notification and an awareness that that's what we're doing.
And that notification on the materials they receive, I'm not talking about a marketing communication. I think you're, thank you, Chris, I think that, I just want folks to recognize that that's what we're doing here.
I've heard that we can't.
I'm getting a nod on, huh? Thank you very much.
Anything else, Kathy?
Yes, thank you.
Ann?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
I make a motion that we waive council rules of order to consider ordinances sixty-six dash eighteen through sixty-nine dash eighteen together. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Ann?
Mr. Reiner?
Yes.
Mr. Rosa?
Yes.
Mayor Peterson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amheros Grooms?
Yes.
Ms. Fox?
Yes.
Mr. Keenan?
Yes.
Ann, could you read those titles?
On ordinance sixty-six eighteen, providing issuance and sale of bonds in maximum aggregate principal amount of nineteen point six million for the purpose of paying the cost of constructing a parking structure within historic Dublin in the Bridge Street District, along with a series of related and abutting roadway improvements, all of which relate to the construction of the Dublin branch, the Columbus Metropolitan Library, and otherwise improving the site, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto. Sixty-seven eighteen, providing issuance and sale of bonds in the maximum principal amount of one point three five million for the purpose of paying the cost of improving the municipal sanitary sewer system by lining existing sewer lines, installing new sewer lines, and rehabilitating manholes, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto. And ordinance sixty-eight eighteen, providing for the issuance and sale of bonds the maximum principal amount of one point seven five million for the purpose of paying the costs of constructing Riverside Crossing Park, including pedestrian plazas on both the east and west sides of the park, together with all incidental work and related appurtenances thereto.
I will introduce those ordinances. Angel?
Good evening, members of council. Staff is preparing for the issuance of bonds for the projects and the amounts that Ann just articulated. I'd first like to start out by introducing the financing team. Our municipal advisor firm is H.J. Umba, and the representatives here this evening are Brian Cooper, who is our municipal advisor, Will Norman, who is to Brian's right, and Tom Rikido, who is not with us here this evening. Our bond counsel is Chris Franzman with Squire Patton Boggs. He's in the front row. You're all familiar with Chris. And then finally, our underwriter is Key Bank. And the representatives here this evening are David Tiggott and Charlie Wise. Ben Gamble is also on the transaction. So the group of those individuals, as well as Dana and myself, will be working over the course of the next month, month and a half, to prepare these bonds to be sold. Ann went through all of each of the ordinances, identifying the dollar amounts and the purposes. There is one discrepancy with respect to the sewer ordinance. The ordinance itself says a million three fifty, whereas the documentation I've provided in the memo says one million three hundred ninety-five thousand dollars. So prior to second reading, we will reconcile that and get you the final, final amount. I would just like to point out that with all of these project costs, council has approved activity, for the most part, already, and taken legislative action to award those contracts. So specifically, with regard to the downtown historic Dublin parking garage and the roadway improvements, that contract was awarded earlier this year. That project will at the onset be funded through income tax revenue. However, every Bridge Street District TIF will identify that parking garage and the roadway improvements as an eligible expenditure. So should TIF revenues be available, it can reduce the amount of income tax money that is needed to retire that debt service. For our sewer improvements, those are paid from the sewer fund, although it will be backed by the income tax pledge of the city because it is a GO issue, and property tax because it is GO. And then finally, the one million seven hundred fifty, seven hundred fifty thousand dollars for the purpose of constructing the cross of, the Riverside Crossing Park, this is in particular the West Plaza, that council has already authorized that infrastructure agreement between Crawford Hoynes and the city. That's similar to the parking garage, will be funded through income tax revenue, but TIF service payments within the area will be eligible to be used to retire that debt service. The amounts, as I stated, have been based on contract amounts and any additional costs that have been, come along the way, that have been previously awarded by city council. We will also use for all of those projects, the proceeds to repay either the general fund, the capital improvement tax fund, and/or the sewer fund for expenses that have already been incurred. Dublin is fortunate to have significant fund balances that will allow us to start projects before bond proceeds are received. In each of these cases, the par amount that is being issued covers the cost of issuance. These bonds will be amortized over twenty years, with principal payments due on December first from 2019 through 2038. We are working together to evaluate various call features. A seven-year call versus a ten-year call, what is the cost differential between those. However, we will likely incorporate a five-year call provision within a portion of the parking garage debt, because should circumstances change in the future where some of those parking spaces need to be reserved or utilized for private purpose, we want to have the flexibility to be able to do that. And that would be part of an economic development deal that council would be aware of. So we just want to preserve that flexibility for what might happen in the future. But certainly, that would not apply. We do not want to pay for a five-year call on the whole entire issue. It would just be a small segment of that. And then our, the issuance of these bonds is in compliance with the city's debt policy and has been taken into consideration with the proposed CIP that encompasses 2019 through 2023. So what's next? On October twenty-second, we will be asking council to approve these three bond ordinances. We have rating calls scheduled with Moody's and S&amp;P on November fifth. And then on November sixth, we will be actually hosting Fitch ratings here in the city of Dublin. We've done that because in 2015, when we issued the Bridge Park debt, both Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's were on-site, Fitch was not. So we want to make sure that Fitch has an opportunity to see the community and see what has changed since the last time that they were out here. We are planning to price the bonds at the end of November and then close in mid-December. So with that, I am here to answer any questions. Our team is here to answer any questions, and otherwise, we will see you on October twenty-second.
Thanks, Angel. Any questions from council?
Just one point of clarification. These, this really isn't about any projects, per se. This is about the sale of bonds to replenish our general fund from the assets that were forwarded to fund them. So this is merely a payback bond sale versus a something...
But it's specific to the project.
Right. It's new projects that council hasn't already considered. And all of these projects were programmed in the CIP.
I have a question for our experts in the bond, bond world there and our bankers. What do you see over the next, we had a long discussion tonight about bonds and future bonding needs for some of the projects we're involved in. What do you see over the next year, two years, three years, in terms of rates?
Let's see which one jumps up to answer that question. I'm always the first to answer, but I'm not always right. So, especially when it comes to interest rates. I think the general sentiment from a market perspective that is that long-term rates are going up over time. We've seen the Fed hike three times. We're expecting another four probably next year, three to four. That is raising short-term interest rates.
Three to four times.
Yeah, yeah. That's increasing short-term rates. The longer the yield curve up until about two weeks ago has remained relatively flat. But the past week, we've seen some volatility in the market. Interest rates and indices have raised thirty basis points, so point three percent. So we've started to see that movement to rates, especially coming towards year-end. And I think the general thought is that long-term rates are going up.
Any other questions? Kathy?
Yeah, thank you very much. So I see that the cost of issuance will be rolled into the par value. What are we seeing as the cost of issuance here, and how is that related to what we have seen historically?
Sure. I can tell you, on our last deal that we did last July, our cost of issuance was about point six percent, so relatively low. Our all-in, our, our all-in total interest costs were still under three percent, though. So we were at two point nine five percent.
This is historically?
This is a year ago.
Okay, yeah.
About, about, you know, fifteen months ago. So certainly, we, because rates have increased, we would expect something a little bit higher than that. But we expect to still be rated as a triple-A. That's our expectation, not saying that that is what will hold true. But we certainly expect to have attractive interest rates for these bonds.
You spoke a little bit about different callable rates, et cetera, so forth. Could you share a little bit about what kind of cost differences we see? Because it also relates to some other conversations that we'll have later this evening about callability between five-year, ten-year, twenty-year. What are you seeing happen, and what is that costing us?
Thank you very much. So with respect to call provisions, in the general market, general obligation, tax-backed securities, the prevailing call feature is a ten-year call, okay? As you shorten that call period, investors want you to pay up for it. So it costs you money today, and what you get in return is callability. So you get the right to call those bonds faster and refund them sooner. So what we're seeing these days are ten-year call for a general obligation governmental-type issuance in the ten-year, ten-year frame is being typically the most advantageous. Now, we are seeing five- and seven-year calls being more prevalent in the market. That is largely, in my opinion, due to the Tax Reform Act that eliminates advance refundings. And so issuers are wanting to go to market and refund their bonds sooner. But you have to take care in calculating the amount you're paying for that early call and compare it to your potential savings down the line.
So what would that range be, say, between a ten and a seven, or ten and a five?
Yeah, it varies depending, it varies. I mean, the market changes every day. It's actually an exercise we do, and we will do on behalf of the City of Dublin, and we do on behalf of other issuers about two weeks, a week or two weeks before we set the interest rates on the bonds. I would say for something in the realm of a seven-year call versus a ten-year call, the cost differential is probably seven to fifteen basis points different. And for a even shorter five-year call, the cost differential might be twenty to twenty-five basis points. These are interest rates that are then, we analyze the cash flows and present value of those costs back, which is then dependent on the size of the bond issue itself. And so to quote dollars, it sense is inapplicable for this type of discussion. But we certainly have that on an issue-by-issue basis for every transaction that we look at.
So I appreciate that. But if the bond market's going to go up, those, those differentials are only going to get bigger. Is that correct, or is that not correct?
Well, it can, it depends on spreads and investor sentiment. So we found earlier in the year, a lot of folks were bringing five-year calls. And so investors got tired of five-year calls, and they found value in ten-year calls. So the... So the, the, the spread's changed. And so really, what you're doing is you're valuing the, the optionality of a security. And you can do that using today's rates, but anytime you value it, then you're also using assumptions on interest rates in the future. So you, you go into the derivative realm and it becomes very difficult to get a, you know, a, an estimated answer.
You're welcome. We'll see you back on October 22nd. Ordinance 69-18, Anne?
Authorizing provision of certain incentive to Johnson Controls to induce a de-lease facility to retain and expand an office and its associated operations and workforce all within the city, authorizing execution of an economic development agreement.
I'll introduce it. Jeremiah?
Good evening, members of council. Before you is the economic development agreement with Johnson Controls for their consolidation and expansion of their central Ohio locations essentially that are going to service, or sorry, be consolidated to Dublin at a location to be determined. They are, they are a Fortune Global 500 company, so they are in publicly traded. The agreement before you is a one-time retention incentive of $33,500, but we will retain 140 employees and also gain an additional 75 employees, so roughly a 50% increase in headcount for the consolidation if they so choose Dublin. It does require them to execute a lease of at least five years of location within the city and also denote as the, the incentive payment is only tied to retention of existing jobs and not a relocation of jobs within the region. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions from council? Chris?
Do you know if they entertain the purchase of any property at all or are they simply looking for a lease option?
Both, both. So they're, they're in the, making that decision now.
Being that the, the language speaks to a lease, will we need to redo this if it turns into an acquisition?
It's a good point. So they, let me correct you. They, they did, they did look at both and chose that a lease was going to be the option.
Very good, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from council? Okay, we'll see you back on October 22nd. Thanks, Jeremiah. Ordinance 70-18, Anne?
Authorizing the city manager to enter into amendment number one to the development agreement, buy-in between the city of Dublin and Crawford Hoynes Development Partners, LLC relating to the Bridge Park development.
I will introduce it. Dana?
Thank you. At your last meeting, staff brought before you the notion of a public market that could be instituted as part of the Bridge Park development as advanced by the developer of Bridge Park, Crawford Hoynes. There was some discussion about that and some information provided relative, and also I mentioned at your last meeting that there would be some other adjustments needed to the development agreement, much of which was housecleaning, but nonetheless, all of that needed to come forward to council relative to an ordinance that would modify the development agreement. What I said to you is I would bring those back so that you could see how that would look in ordinance form, and then you can consider these changes as you review this ordinance, of which you'll have a second reading at your next meeting. So there are two different memos, just to make things confusing in the packet. One, one was relative only to the public market and follow-up comments relative to the public market as it relates to this ordinance. And then the balance of that, we kept separate because those were items not previously discussed. And there was another memo in packet about that. Angel's going to present that information to you. Greg Daniels is here as well to, to help with that with any questions you may have.
Thank you, members of council. And just for reference, Greg Daniels is an attorney with Square Patent Pogues that has been with us on, in this development agreement with Crawford Hoynes from day one. So very intimately involved with the development agreement and can help answer any questions that council may have throughout the course of this presentation. So as Dana outlined, we are here this evening with ordinance number 70-18, which amends the development agreement between the city of Dublin and Crawford Hoynes. That agreement was originally approved by city council in August of 2015 and was a culmination of approximately one and a half years of negotiations between the city and Crawford Hoynes as the developer of Bridge Park. Throughout that entire negotiation, there were professionals at the table, from legal counsel on both sides, financial advisors on both sides, city staff, Crawford Hoynes staff. We all participated in those negotiations, and the result of that is the development agreement that was approved in 2015. We felt at the time and still feel today that the original development agreement provided for the catalytic development that is known as Bridge Park today with measures in place that protected the city from as much financial risk as possible. The original development agreement and financial model supporting the development agreement was built on a set of assumptions and estimates in terms of private investment values, which then translate into revenues that would be generated, as well as the cost of all the public improvements. Over three years later, though, it is necessary to modify the development agreement to account for changes that have occurred. I will be reviewing these modifications in the slides here this evening. I do want to note that the majority, with the exception of one of the modifications, these, these modifications are going to come forward regardless of the market discussion. So just for clarification, this discussion here this evening and the modifications before you are not driven by the market. The first change relates to the roadway improvements identified in section 7.1.3 and Exhibit C of the development agreement. The development agreement identified the public roadways and the parties responsible for funding those roadways. The city was responsible for the first phase surrounding blocks B, C, and Z. Those were notable because specifically blocks B and C were where the city-funded parking garages were located. Block Z is on the west side of the river. The total cost of these roadways was expected to be $11.1 million with repayment coming from the TIF revenues from blocks B and C, which is 100% payable to the city of Dublin, backed by the minimum service payment guarantee. Phase two and three roadways supporting the remainder of the development were the responsibility of Crawford Hoynes through the issuance of bonds through the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority, repaid from the TIF revenues generated on the remaining blocks and the charges imposed by the Bridge Park New Community Authority on properties just within the boundaries of the Bridge Park NCA. This was the original map that was included in the development agreement. The city's responsibilities are reflected in red and blue, while Crawford Hoynes responsibilities were reflected in orange and green. Based on the development review process and the layout of the buildings, a few streets have changed, which I have outlined on the slide. So Laramo Street between Longshore and Dale Drive were added. That was a developer responsibility. Laramo Street between Longshore and Riverside Drive was eliminated. That was originally the developer's responsibility. Longshore Street was extended to John Shields Parkway, which was Crawford Hoynes responsibility. The extension of North River View up to North High Street was the city's responsibility. And as I mentioned, all the changes had been previously approved by city council as part of the development review process. This map, which would be incorporated with the amended development agreement, reflects those changes. The circled areas are the, are the areas specifically that are changed as part of Based on those changes, you can see that the roadway costs increased from an estimated $16.6 million at the time the development agreement was executed to approximately $25.2 million today. So certainly, it's not out of the realm of possibility that costs that were expected one year escalate over time when they're bid. Those costs are not entirely the city's responsibility. As I just outlined for you, the costs associated with blocks B, C, and Z, our original commitment was $11.1 million. The total cost was $14.1. Blocks A and D were originally scheduled to be $5.5 million, and they are approximately $11 million. In addition, the roadway improvements to block A have also incorporated the roadway improvements that were outlined on the map that are now in block H. The increase in the cost of these roadways leads in part to the second change of the development agreement, which is removing the amount of the Columbus Franklin County Finance Authority debt that can be issued for the community facilities and the roadways. Recall that the community facilities that are outlined in the development agreement include seven parking structures within Bridge Park, the Conference and Event Center, and the roadways. While the city committed to funding the two parking structures in blocks B and C, as well as the first phase of roadways, the cost for the other facilities and roadways was to be financed through the finance authority and limited to $61 million, provided that the annual TIF revenues and NCA charges could provide 115% coverage on the annual debt service. Based on the increased roadway costs, as well as the increased cost of the community facilities, which you will see here on the next slide, we are proposing to remove the cap. However, in doing so, we are also proposing to increase that coverage from 115% to 120%. Because the private investment is expected to generate sufficient revenue to pay this additional debt, protected by the 120% coverage, we do not believe that this change has any negative impact on the city. This table shows the original cost of the community facilities in their original development agreement versus the actual costs that are known today. I've highlighted in the green there those two components of the community facilities that are the city's responsibility. Even though both of those costs of those parking structures came in over $16 million, the city's contribution to those garages was capped at $16 million, so any excess has been paid by the developer at this point in time. I want to stop here and remind folks that when we are talking about funding for Bridge Park and funding for the community facilities and roadways, we are simply talking about just the parking garages, the Conference and Event Center, and the roadways. We are not talking about providing funding for any of the private investment, private homes, private condos, private apartments that are part of Bridge Park. I think that's a very important point to keep in mind. The third change relates to the language in section 7.2.2 pertaining to optional redemptions of the finance authority's bonds. The original agreement indicated that the bonds could be redeemed at par plus accrued interest no later than 10 years after the date of issuance, essentially a 10-year call, which is very normal. As a result of current market conditions whereby there are fewer buyers for taxable debt with a 10-year redemption, which results in higher interest rates, the city is recommending that the development agreement be modified to extend the optional redemption from 10 years to 15 years for taxable debt only. To the extent that interest costs are lowered, the city benefits by virtue of its position in the waterfall. As council is aware, through discussions on the public market, there is a revenue waterfall that is built into the original development agreement. Essentially, for all blocks other than B and C, where we capture all of the TIF revenue, the revenues are distributed based on a priority outlined on this slide and the next. So just in summary, any monies that are payable to the county due to the creation of residential incentive districts has to be paid. Any portion of the school district compensation has to come out of those revenues. The debt service has to be met. Any reserves set aside for debt service, as well as operation and maintenance of the community facilities to a level that is outlined in the original development agreement comes out next. Then the city, city comes into play here. We get a portion if there's any shortfall in the minimum service payment within blocks B and C. That can be then leveraged on other blocks, so the city sits in a position there to capture any excess revenue. After that would be paid, the trustee can then have 50% of any remaining funds to use to optional, for optional redemption of, of the debt. And then at the bottom is the city, and we would capture any additional revenue. So that the market option, operations can be financed and the debt service paid, possibly using a turbo bond structure, which would accelerate the amortization of the bonds, the city would move its priority on the minimum service payment shortfall, if any, behind what is currently listed in step eight. So there might be a, we are still working with the developer on this, and we will have something nailed down by the second reading, but you may be, you may see item six and number eight switched to allow for these bonds to get paid down sooner. We do not view this as having a negative impact on the city. The city did not plan on receiving any excess revenue from any blocks other than B and C because in B and C, we capture all of the TIF revenue generated. So our ability to repay the debt service on the two parking structures and our roadway contribution did not contemplate any revenue from any other block. Therefore, by switching the waterfall for just block D to allow for this market to take place, we do not view that as being detrimental to the city in any way. The next change pertains to the cost of issuance that is outlined in section 7.2.2 in the original development agreement. This section limits the cost of issuance to 2% for each bond issue. At that time, we expected Crawford Hoynes and the finance authority that they would obtain short-term construction financing that would then be refinanced to a more permanent structure once the project stabilized. However, Crawford Hoynes and the finance authority have been able to obtain permanent financing with cost of issuance of approximately 3.5%, which results in what we believe is savings to the project. Not only is it lower than if you issued it 2% at the onset and then issued again later up to a maximum of 2%, it also locks in presumably a lower interest rate early on in the process as opposed to having to go through that process three to five years after their original construction, construction loan was, was awarded. Again, to the extent that favorable long-term financing could get in place sooner rather than later, interest costs would be lowered, which could ultimately benefit the city by virtue of being in that waterfall. Probably one of the most complicated amendments is the release of the developer from a make-hold provision that currently exists on the block A bonds. These bonds were issued with this feature, which requires the issuer to pay a premium based on a discounted value of the called principle if those bonds are called early. While the development agreement provides for a 10-year call at par plus accrued interest, the city agreed at the time the A-block bonds were issued to allow this provision to go forward so that they could obtain lower financing, lower cost of borrowing and permanent financing. But we did so indicating that the developer would pay any premium if the city forced them to refinance at any point in the future. Our financial advisors, the financial advisors from Crawford Hoynes or representing Crawford Hoynes did numerous analyses to determine if this ultimately was in the best interest for the project, for the city, for the developer to issue these bonds with a make-hold feature. And we came to the conclusion that the lower interest rate obtained at the time the bonds were issued likely outweigh any premium that might have to be paid if the bonds are called at some point in the future. Certainly, like we just had the discussion on our, our bond issue, there are a lot of different what-ifs, and it depends on the interest rate, depends on the scenarios at the time. So it's hard to say with absolute certainty, did it make sense or did it not? But it is our belief that to lock into that and obtain the financing that they were able to obtain, it is beneficial to the project, and as such, they should be released from that call provision. We are supportive of that. And I will end on probably the most easiest part to understand, and that is related to the developer's bed tax grant. The original development agreement was negotiated at a time where the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau received 25% of our bed tax funding. The grant that Crawford Hoynes receives for Bridge Park or that the Bridge Park New Community Authority receives and is paid to the trustee to retire the community facility debt is based on 25% of the revenue, bed tax revenue that we receive after the deduction of 25% for the Dublin Convention and Visitors Bureau. Not long after this development agreement was executed, council bumped up that Dublin Convention, Convention and Visitors Bureau allocation from 25 to 35%. However, the development agreement had in writing that it was 25%. So for the purposes of the two hotels that have already been constructed, we don't have the ability to adjust the fact that we are actually paying more out to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. What this recommendation includes is that for any future hotels built within Bridge Park, just within Bridge Park, that the amount that Crawford Hoynes receives, 25% be after the 35% reduction that is payable to the Convention and Visitors Bureau. So with that, we are here to answer any questions. I know- So, with that, we are here to answer any questions. I know Crawford Hoynes' team is here, along with their financial advisor as well. Greg is here, and we would answer any questions that you may have. I do want to acknowledge Councilmember DeRosa sent a number of questions on Friday. We are working to get those answered. We will send it to the, all of council, responses to all of council in the next couple of days so that you have that well in advance of the second reading.
And there will be a second reading on my twenty-second, so bear that in mind. Are there any questions from council? Kathy?
I had a couple more in addition to, I think I sent you a good dozen of them, yeah. And none of them related to the last one, so there you have it. Wait, if you would go, please, back to the very first or the second slide where you talk about what we anticipated and what the reality turned out to be.
Do you mean in terms of costs of roadways or costs of the community facilities?
The roadway. This one, this. So, the cost estimate from two thousand and fifteen to two thousand and eighteen, this, because this is basically two thousand and fifteen, right? That's kind of where we were, right? So, that is a fifty percent difference. Can you help us understand what made up that fifty percent? When you said cost, what, just?
I would defer to Crawford Hoynes. We did not have that same cost escalation. I know certainly part of their Phase Two Block A is likely driven by the fact that additional roadways that were associated with Block H are included in that. So, Matt, I don't know if you want to speak to that or can speak to that.
In the meantime, Angel, we paid prevailing wage on the work that we had done. Is that correct? We were subject to prevailing wage, and the work that they had done would not have been subject to the same wage rate, correct?
Greg, can you answer that? If there ultimately going to be public roadways, did it still had to be subject to prevailing wage?
It's all prevailing wage.
I don't have the numbers in front of me, so I wasn't prepared. I'll follow up. The answer is, I mean, we bid it out to three or four contractors, just like we do when we're performing work for the city. And these are the numbers that we're getting back. Obviously, we don't, we don't set the standards on the streets. The standards have been set by the city. You know, I don't look at your costs in detail either, but I'll have to research it just to understand why, why the differences are. But like I said, we, you know, we're bidding it to the same group, three to four general contractors and getting good coverage.
Did this include some of the additions, changes we made in terms of the materials, the numbers? Would that account for some of this increase? I'm trying to recall.
Yes, a part of that. And I think we had the benefit, although, you know, our costs came in higher than what was originally expected, is we really had the first roadways in there. So, the Phase Two and Phase Three roadways, Kathy, to your point, you know, here we are three, almost four years later, and certainly there is cost escalation associated with that.
The other thing I would say is that if you look in the, I think it was in the last memo when we were here, there was, we had the private cost in there as well. So, the D-block that we are moving ahead on right now from C-block to D-block, we're close to forty percent increase. So, we're seeing it across the board, just not in the roadways. And there could be specific materials in the roads that are driving that cost higher. So, again, I'd have to look at the line items and see if there's some of those things, but that's, that's, we're seeing it across the board.
Right now, in the construction field, you're at an all-time high, I think, just across America. Cost of materials and cost of labor, unfortunately, it is what it is. The interest rate is interesting, and I presume the interest rate's going to go up, and so this is going to be a pretty good trade-off, if that's what you're suggesting.
For which part of this?
On the trade-off of the lower interest rate.
The two percent.
At the time of bonds.
Oh, for the cost of issuance?
Yeah.
In our view, it's a good trade-off because we were anticipating two financings in the first five years in the original agreement, the model, so total cost of issuance at a four percent. Given the interest rate environment and frankly, given some of the financing the developer is able to find, they're able to do all the financing upfront on all the blocks so far, which is very advantageous. Locks in those lower interest rates. And so, they have proposed, and we think it's a good deal, that the allowance, if they do the long-term financing, if they do short-term financing, this doesn't apply, but if they do the long-term financing as they have, it's a three and a half percent cap, so we have a half percent savings on that.
Yeah, it's good. All right.
I had several questions, and I won't go through those because I'll look forward to the answers. But on the next slide, I think it was the next slide, when you, you made a comment that we estimate that, last bullet on there, additional revenue is expected to generate to repay. Will you share with us, please, between the next reading what those calculations are so that we know? I mean, you've obviously done that. Could you share that?
I do not have actual dollars because, as I've indicated before, the county has not come out yet with values on Bridge Park. But what we can tell is based on the increased private investment, we would expect additional TIF revenues to be generated within these areas.
I would love to see, I mean, we would expect and roughly, I think it would just help us because these costs are going up at these, I mean, these are not small increases. These are fifty percent changes in value, that I think it's important for us to see some what-if ranges so that we, so we know what you're sharing here.
There are definitely projections galore.
I mean, that would be important for us because you're basing this on it, and again, in an increasing cost. Okay. The only other question, and then I'll defer to the answers that I asked earlier, was as to the waterfall. I am not understanding why, if through all of our estimates, we don't assume there's ever going to be dollars in that waterfall. I can't, to the point where Block D I'm talking about here again, to your, is that right? Is that what, yeah. That, why would, why would we step out of line or make a change if there wasn't a consequence to this change? I'm, I'm not understanding what the, what value accrues to either party in this if we don't, clearly, there's a financing thing going on here, but could you share that?
When we say we don't expect any revenue, when we prepared the development agreement and came to agreement, we presented what we believe to be the most conservative financial model. We did not want to show council a model that we were banking on if come maybe revenues at some point in the future. Certainly, models that we looked at back then show that in future years, there's revenue, once those debt service reserves are established, once the O and M reserves are established, once all of those other things are met, that the latter years, there might be some, some excess revenue. But we did not want to present to council at the time that when we couldn't be certain about it. We wanted to contain our level of expectation for repayment to the areas where we invested and what we knew, in those areas that were backed by the minimum service payment guarantee. So, when I, when I say that we didn't expect any revenue, that was just our conservative nature as a city, as a city council at that time, where we didn't want to show additional revenue that we were not certain would be there.
So, then there is a potential cost implication to the city of moving that waterfall. So, then I would again, you said there are projections out there that once this happens, this happens. I think it's then, then important, if you could also share that with us, if, if, if that is acceptable, because I think it's important for us, if we're going to make that change, we understand and the taxpayers understand what the potential, what is that number? A dollar, a million dollars, a hundred? I mean, we're not looking for precision. We're looking for, or I'm looking for, if you will. Just help us understand a little bit about what trade-off we're giving, we're doing in this. That would be helpful. Thank you very much.
Jane?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. Could you go back to that, that waterfall page where you said you would be switching out maybe six to eight? I just have a couple. It's very complex, obviously, so, and I wasn't here last week, so I apologize if I'm asking questions that were answered last, or the last meeting. My understanding is that in applying the half percent that the NCA can charge, that they, and this is where I'm asking whether the, the money will go first and foremost to the five million for the build-out for the public market.
It's in the waterfall for D-block. That's where all the money's going. And there's two improvements in D-block that are eligible for funding. One, if council approves it, would be the public market. One, already approved under the development agreement, is the garage.
Right.
So, there'll be one financing that covers both of those.
And that would be the half percent, sales tax increase on those properties within Bridge Park?
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. Okay. The second question I have is, the NCA is the responsible authority to levy the tax. And I didn't, I haven't seen any minutes, but normally, and this is a question maybe for Angel, normally, the NCA, I would have, would think, would have an opportunity to look a review, do a review as to how much debt that they want to incur, how much, how many charges they want to apply to the residents and the corporations within Bridge Park. Has that conversation, can you kind of clarify for me?
There's been a lot of conversations on that, and certainly, with respect to the garage and the overall development agreement, there's been conversations about that going all the way back to the beginning. There won't need to be further conversations about the financing for this particular block. That needs to go back to the board. This amendment needs to go back to the board, and those discussions need to be had.
Right. Are there limits? Well, there's debt limits, but for the community authority, we have the development charge that's placed on the residents. We have a half percent tax. I know that they can add others. They can do rentals. They can do user fees. They have the authority to apply all sorts of things. Where is the water line for the community authority not to overburden the citizens within Bridge Park?
Yeah. The main water line is contained in the Declaration of Covenants that was recorded back in two thousand and fifteen. That sets limits for how much the property owners themselves have to agree to all of these charges. So, they agree contractually with the authority that should the budgets of the authority demand it, should the needs of the bonds demand it, they can levy charges up to a certain amount. So, that's one. There's also a petition that was submitted to this council when the Bridge Park Community Authority was formed. That had all these sorts of same limits in it. That's, and so, council at the time approved the amount of the assessed valuation charge, the amount of the sales charge, the amount of the bed night charge. All these different charges were approved by council and agreed by the property owners. So, those are the controls on NCA's.
Now, I would add, there was a great deal of discussion and timeframe involved in all those, in all those talks. I mean, we went round and round and round to protect the city's interest. And really, at the, at the end of the day, what we're doing with the, we're altering the agreement here, the development agreement. The NCA is the one that has the ability to assess the charge.
That's correct.
That, that half percent sales tax. So, that NCA is made up of representatives, is it three or four from, appointed by us?
There's four appointed by city council.
And three appointed by the developer.
Yeah, I do understand that. I guess what I'm, I'm looking at it from a, an overriding view of the charges that one places on the citizens within it as we, as we say yes to. We don't actually say yes to it. If we say yes to that it's a community facility, then they have the power then to levy the fee, right?
Right.
How often is that sales charge reviewed and possibly lifted if, for instance, let's say the public market makes it for about four or five years and just can't, operating and maintenance expenses aren't being covered, whatever, it closes up. So, what happens then?
There'd be, well, first, there'd need to be an alternative use for that space that would qualify as a community facility, because there'd still be bonds outstanding at that time. And the charge would need to remain on until those bonds are paid. So, the community authority is going to have to covenant with the bondholders that it's going to levy the charge necessary to pay it back.
And does the community authority then kind of review that on a yearly basis to see that, that, that the sales charge is covering what's necessary?
Yes.
Paying the bonds, and monitoring the community facilities' operating margins and expenses, that sort of thing?
Yes.
And does that come back to city council, those, those minutes and those, those kinds of reviews?
Certainly, the minutes are publicly available. There's no re-review by city council, but as it has been in the past several years, the community authority has had at least an annual meeting to review the budgets and the charges.
I would point out, there's terms on these, on the appointments that are the purview of city council.
Which is reappointing.
We just did some reappointments, yeah. So, just keep in mind, if, if you think things are really getting upside down, you do have the ability to change.
Right.
Change the makeup of the NCA.
Right, okay. And I, I just want to be clear that the half percent not only pays for the build-out, but it also supports the operating and maintenance of the public market. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, let's say that the community market is very successful and begins to take care of itself. And, and then the money then is, the remaining half percent charge begins to pay for D-block's parking garage because it's a community facility, and then that gets paid off. What happens with half percent after that? Do you, is it, is it lifted? Or does it go to pay off another parking garage? Can it be used on another?
It's just put into the D-block waterfall.
D-block only, okay. Just want to be clear about that.
And that's the change that this is making, is it makes it D-block only designation?
Yeah, that's one of the changes here. The other is, there is no requirement that the sales charge be levied. So, now that it is being specifically contemplated, we wanted to specifically handle it for D-block here.
Okay. And let's say you need a community facility funded somewhere else. How high can the sales tax go?
Half percent is the max under the current declaration. The property owners would all have to agree to a higher charge.
Okay, so.
Just for clarification, those community facilities are outlined before a new community facility could be added to the equation, council would have to accept that.
Right, which, which leads to one more question, and I'll try to be short here. Originally, in the development agreement, a cultural arts center was, was considered one of the community facilities that would be considered, which would have allowed that debt level to include that. And by not having a cultural arts center there, or are you removing it? Are you removing that from the, the community facility in this agreement? Or is that still a possibility over there?
It's not in the agreement now. I'd have to defer to Crawford Hoynes to let us know if it's still a possibility within the current footprint of Bridge Park. But that was removed before the original development agreement was signed.
That was removed, okay.
Yeah, so the sixty-one million is purely the five parking structures, the conference and event center, and the Phase Two and Three roadways.
Okay. And my very last question is about the market itself. And I apologize because I wasn't here for the last, and I did read, read the minutes, but, and I know that the market will survive or it won't survive if it, if it goes through. But, and, and the question would be, other than just having the fresh foods bakery and that sort of thing, like the market downtown has a lot of community activities that, that create a foundation that make this a successful entity. Do you happen to know, or could you tell me, are there, in the build-out, are there plans for integrated indoor/outdoor spaces, kitchens, meeting spaces, gathering spots, things that create more than just groceries and a food court, things that make it a community amenity?
I think they spoke to that a little bit at the last meeting, but yeah, I'm glad you hopped up.
That's a great question. We haven't really got into the details, but I think if you go back and look at Rick's presentation, it's, it's really important. You know, if you can have, we went and saw one in Atlanta. They had a community kitchen where they brought people in and were teaching them how to cook. And it's got to be a gathering place. You just can't be going there to shop or grab something to eat. I think it, it needs to have all those elements really to, you know, have that activity and that sort of sense of place. So, it's, it'll be critical to do that. And we, like I said, we haven't got into the planning of it, but we would want some space like that, for sure.
Do you have enough flexibility with just the one-floor plan? Can you do anything more? Can you, can you get, get a second level? Can you get a, are you a burdened by?
It's all money, right?
Right. Yeah, it's just money. I don't know if the parking garage limits you, the parking garage above. Of course, you haven't built it yet, so.
Well, there's clear height in there. You could potentially put a mezzanine and add seating up there, which maybe bring some of that off the ground floor. That's something you could potentially do down the road. Obviously, it'd be a low clear height. So, yeah, there's, there's potential.
But you're thinking about all this. You're thinking about that dynamic of, of it being more than just.
There's an issue on the timing, though, is there not, in terms of the construction start on that, that we really need to have an idea what's going to happen there because you'd build it out different if this doesn't work.
Well, it's a, it's really a tenant improvement project when it comes down to it, the market as a whole. So, what I suggested, the mezzanine, that's something that could happen down the road if the market's successful. You could come in and reevaluate that. And, I mean, if you go out there today, you can see the paths already being built and there's, there's steps as we're moving up the hill. So, that limits us in some respects because there's rock there. But there's other things we could, we could look at if, you know, if this is really taken off. I mean, you try to find a way to, to move some back-of-the-house operations somewhere else, things of that sort. So, like, for instance, there'll probably be an office for the manager and support staff that's there. You know, you could put them somewhere else, things of that sort. So, I think, we have So I think we have to be flexible, that's for sure. Is there a change? Chris?
I have a couple of questions. While, while you're up and mentioning about the, the space, so after our meeting last time, I went down to the North Market and spent, I don't know, maybe two hours, watched everybody that was coming and going, and walked about three blocks all the way around the market, just to kind of see the area that it was in and what, what businesses were happening surrounding it. But they also had, you know, significant area for outdoor eating and things. So would you have to come back and significantly change the, what you already have approved to provide for some of those outdoor spaces? Or will this market only have outdoor spaces in the sense of during the seasonal farmer's market component that would be added into this, you know, during the appropriate seasons? What is your plan for engaging the street network and having outdoor dining? Because as I look at this, you're kind of built out to your buildable zones.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good question. If you look at the elevation, the, there would be the west elevation on Long Shore Street. There are planned four or five garage doors in that elevation that would roll up. Now, does the seating spill out, or does the market space build at the street? I don't think we've come to that conclusion yet, because again, we haven't laid it out, circulation and things of that sort. But you definitely want something happening out there. The limits of the right-of-way, we'd have to get into that, obviously, with whatever the agreement is or the, the plot. We'd have to understand that. But you don't want it to just be, you know, glass, and there's just concrete up to the glass, and what's happening behind the glass. It's got to be an active space, inside and out.
Yeah, I know they're constructing the pad now, so I just wanted to kind of try to think through if we're going to do that. I think the, at least the opportunity for dining outdoors on a regular basis from the market, at least in my assessment of what was going on down at the North Market, is people didn't want to eat inside. They wanted to be outside, and I think that would contribute to the success of the market. So that was one question I wanted to ask.
The other thing is, people will, people will take things and go to the other pocket parks as well. Obviously, we have other seating options, other, other places. So you want that activity to happening throughout the neighborhood as well as at the location.
Certainly, around the North Market, there aren't many of those. As I walked the blocks surrounding there, it was very industrial feel to it. I mean, there were lots of bars and things like that, but during the lunch hour, none of them were, none of those spaces were accessible to the public. Those were kind of, seemed like those came alive after the market went dark. So that was just.
Most of the stuff that's across the street, by the way, as you may know, is getting torn down for an AC hotel, so.
Yeah. Which will be interesting to see how that all impacts there. But thank you. I think the balance of my questions are largely legal ones. So I'll try to go through these in the order that they are in the memo. On page two of the memo, it talks about revenue waterfalls, and it talks about the half percent retail sales charge. Is there any retail sales charge being assessed in the district today?
No.
How about on the hotel? Is there any NCA charge today that's levied in, in the hotel spaces?
Josiah, are they doing that now?
The hotel charge is now.
Yeah.
And the designation for that hotel charge, is the NCA accumulating those dollars, or where are they being driven to at this point in time?
Those would flow into the regular waterfall for the other blocks outside of D.
Okay. And what amenities? So I think the only public amenities I, I can think of off the top of my head would be the parking garages, which were city-funded. What other public amenities would those charges flow to? I think they, at the exchange, there is some component there.
Those revenues are pledged to the A Block bonds specifically.
So A Block bonds, which are the A Block parking garage next to the hotel there, and also the event center, are A Block bonds.
Specifically pledged to the.
Okay. So for those two existing hotels, the AC and the Home Two, the Home Two isn't.
The Home Two does not have an NCA hotel charge on it, because it's not in the community authority.
Okay, only the, the AC. Well, that was designated as part of the, the AC was part of the TIF, so it would have been a natural leap to think it was also an NCA. But, okay, so those revenues are being, so would there be an additional 5% retail assessed on that that would flow to D Block? Or would that just, are those funds sufficient for what you need to do in the A Block at present?
It's a half percent, half percent?
Right.
Yeah, yes is the answer.
The, the half percent will go back on the AC as well?
Correct.
If this were approved. So then they would essentially be a percent and a half.
Correct.
Half going to A Block, or 1% going to A Block, half of a percent going to D Block. My next question is relative to, let me read through this sentence. The hundred and percent, 120% coverage requirement, going from 115 to the 120, what does that look like in real money?
Off the top of my head, I'm not sure, but we can get some projections on that. And, and a lot of it, and this goes back to some other questions, are, you know, are we looking at this based on a set of assumptions that we project that could change over time?
I would assume there is some calculation that would be ballpark relative to, you know, urban rockable districts such as this. They're, they're popping up all over the country. There's some price per square foot that is getting assigned to those, and it would be plus or minus 5 or 10% or whatever it is that would be applied to this one.
Yeah, and we have projected based on that, so we can.
And that's all I'm asking for, is kind of a napkin thing, is, you know, these types of development are generating this per square foot, and we have this many square foot, this is what it translates to. That would be very helpful, because to say 5%, it doesn't sound like a whole lot, but the number may be very big. It may be very small, we, we just simply don't know. If all of these funds for this half percent sales tax are all earmarked for D Block, and that's going to encompass most of the restaurants and, you know, a big portion of what can be generated there, will we have any capacity left to fund through this kind of arrangement, any future development that might happen on subsequent blocks that would be to the east? What would be left for them to get a half percent on to help fund this? Because, you know, my hope is that we reach more of a critical mass, and the requirement will be continued development, in my opinion, to have enough critical mass to support the entirety of the district. And my concern is, if all of these funds are earmarked for D Block alone exclusively, where will they gather any payments to fund the balance of the blocks?
So keep in mind, for the balance of the blocks, there is always going to be what are known as the assessed valuation charges. Even on D Block, those are still the vast majority of the charges that are going to go to fund the bonds. So the two remaining blocks, F Block and G Block, will have access to those AV charges from their blocks, as well as anything left over from the other blocks besides D.
Could we get some estimates of what percentage of this 5% tax is going to pay for the costs of D Block versus the other revenue generation there? You know, does this make up 10% of the overall cost, or 50%?
Yeah.
Or whatever that percent might be? I think that would be helpful for us to understand. If we, in fact, allow all of it to be earmarked for one single block, what will be left for the balance of the blocks?
Hi, Josiah Huber, financial advisor to Crawford-Hoehng with DePerna Advisors. Really good question. So just doing the math, it's about 18%. So if you look at D Block, and the question was, how much of D Block, the garage, the market, and the streets are being funded from the sales tax charge? It's about 18%. The other, the large portion of the repayment for those bonds is coming from the service payments and the assessed valuation charges from D Block itself.
So 18% seems to me like a fairly significant amount. I mean, that's a, that's a do or don't do number on these kinds of developments. And it's encompassing all of the restaurants that are currently present in the development, correct?
The everything.
Yes.
Outside of A.
Outside of D. So, so it includes all of, yes, all of the retail tenants within the Bridge Park master plan.
Excepting food that would be taken out, like non-taxable.
Correct.
Groceries.
Correct.
Taken out of the market, most likely. But, so my question, I guess, would then to, to think through the feasibility of future developments, if you're going to be absent in 18% revenue stream of, you know, what the financing of those entities might look like, how do you fill that gap? Don't need an answer on that tonight. Hopefully, for next reading, we would have an opportunity to hear that. What would happen if the NCA board, if we were to grant all of these designees and the NCA board did not give this their blessing? Do we have any other mechanisms to go through at that point? Or are we, what do we do then?
It's ultimately contingent on NCA board approval. I think at this point, there is a certain comfort level, because there have been preliminary conversations that the NCA board is likely to approve this. It's not final to its final, but we have every expectation of that.
My last comment would be relative to the, to the waterfall. I think I would agree with Kathy. It would be difficult to explain to the taxpayer why, why we got out of line if there was any revenue to be realized. Maybe there'll be revenue, maybe there won't, but that would, that would be a difficult. My last comment is relative to page 166. It relates to, there's a series of if statements, but I, I'm missing the then. So section four talks about the application of service payments and NCA revenue from blocks A, F, G, H, and Z. And so it talks about if service payments are collected, if they're pursuant of a TIF ordinance. And so if I could get an explanation of section four on a page 166, that would be very helpful, because I see a series of if statements, and I keep looking at the bottom for the then, and then it goes to section five.
Okay. Can we get back to you on that?
Great. That's all I had, thank you.
Okay.
Mike, anything? You good? Okay, well, we're going to hear from Ms. Kik, and then we're going to wrap back up. Ms. Kik? I'm assuming this is the place you wanted plugged into the agenda. It's all yours.
Well, I appreciate your time. Thank you. My name's Linda Kik, and I'm actually a small business owner in historic Dublin, and I'm sure almost all of you know me. I've been a chairperson of the Architecture Review Board a number of years ago, and have been around for a while. So basically, and I am not here as a representative, although I am a member of the Historic Business Owners Association, but I'm here primarily to just share a constant concern, a question that we have, and that is, what is the historic district on the, this side of the river going to look like in five years? And what do you want it to look like in five years? There's been comment about the attrition of businesses in the area, and my question is, this beautiful, wonderful bridge that's going to be coming across, finally, we're getting our library back, which is great, what are people going to walk to? Why are they going to cross the bridge? What are they coming to? If they're coming to a restaurant, the wonderful avenue with its bright lights and shiny facade, which is beautiful, are they going to walk across the bridge to come to the restaurant? Are they going to park at Bridge Park and walk across to come to the library? It, it just, we, we talk about this a lot. What are they coming? Why are people going to come across the bridge? We have a great alliance of businesses, the Visitors Bureau, we work together to create events, and we're not, I am not opposed to Bridge Park. I have benefited from it. We do events at the event center, doing an event of the, at the Brick, Brick House Blue. Is that, am I saying that right? Okay, thank you. Fabulous space with Ohio Health. We work, my business personally works with Vasso, you know, doing events with them. So we have a lot of collaborative relationships that we have developed and that we're working on. But again, it's, what are they, what do we come, what is the bridge, you know, what are they coming to? We're seeing more and more professional services, dentists, doc, dentists, attorneys, you know, filling retail spaces that previously were cute little niche shops, so that the bus tours, you know, can come and stop and see different things. The retail establishments in that area have decreased. I looked at past statistics, you know, over 50% in the last few years. So I'm just, it's somewhat of a rhetorical question, but what are we looking at in the future for the historic district? I mean, I'm not going to be around forever, and so it's really not going to benefit me, but just a few statistics, which I'm sure you're very aware of, but due to all of the, you know, construction, I-270, closing the bridge, closing part of High Street, all the construction now with the library, which we, you know, the library being gone, it has just really impacted those micro-businesses, as I'm sure you're very aware of. So, you know, the, it was interesting when I was, when I was hearing about the farmer's market, the number-one thing that I believe, and correct me if I'm wrong, there you are, thank you, sir, that the number-one thing why the farmer's market was so successful was that there was ease of parking. Okay? I'm not going to, you know, hit a, a dead horse tonight, but that was a, a big issue for people being able to come to the farmer's market. My meeting today with Ohio Health, doing an event with them at the Brick House Blue, was they were thrilled because there was free parking for all of their attendees to come and park there. So we're excited that the new parking garage is going to be coming with the library. But again, this is more of a general philosophical question that, you know, what do you want the gem to look like in, that it's referred to the historic district area, you know, in, in the next few years? It's changed dramatically since I've had my business since 2004 in the area, and I am not, you know, saying that, oh, we need to stop progress and, and anything of that sort. But I really would like for, as a city resident, I've lived here since 99, and live in similar neighborhood, a couple of people on this council, it's changed a lot, but, you know, what are we looking at the historic, what do we want it to be in the future? And I just want to bring that up, because it's just now the market. It's, you know, maybe I'll move my business over there, I don't know, but gee, there's Jennies, we already have a Jennies. A lot of those North Market, which I love the North Market, those businesses, very similar, are in historic Dublin already, and if we're going to bring very similar between Jennies and an artisan bread and businesses that are already there, you know, what does that do? Maybe nothing, I don't know. My crystal ball sometimes is kind of fuzzy for the future.
Then I, I would say, I, I appreciate you coming and speaking tonight. That takes a lot of courage. It is, I share that concern, and I'm hopeful that in our second reading, I asked a number of questions when we met last time of what is this going to, what is the impact on the surrounding areas? Because as I walked around the North Market last week, there was very little retail. There's a Candle Lab out on High Street, but until you got all the way down to the short north, there wasn't much retail. And so I think that, that question has been posed to staff, or at least I felt like I posed the stat, to that, to the staff.
Great.
And I am hopeful that when, on second reading, when the list of questions that they have been given to this point, that would certainly be one of them that would be addressed, because you're right, it is a jewel, and we cannot, we cannot harm something to do good for another. That wouldn't be a judicious thing for us to do.
And there are other businesses, even at Bridge Street, that are similar to what are, you know, and maybe what's being brought, you know, is going to be very different from what is at the current North Market. But, you know, when I went down through all the businesses that are current in the North Market, I'm like, are we, you know, what are we doing here? Is that?
Sure, we need to, we need to proceed eyes wide open and try to explore what our unintended consequences might be.
Right.
And I trusted, our next reading, we're going to have some answers to those questions. Hopefully, the direction was given to, to reach out to those folks and to get a consensus and to have a perhaps more meaningful discussion when we're together next.
You know, when this was conceived five, seven years ago, the idea was to create a certain amount of synergy. Worthington had a downtown, Westerville has a downtown. We had a very small area to go to.
Right. Right.
A lot of people, when they went out to dinner, actually went to the Short North, they went to Grandview or someplace else, and they left Dublin because there wasn't that much interest. You can only eat in our handful of restaurants so many times, and so I think the concept was to create, give Dublin a downtown, and it's not historical side of the river versus the Bridge side of the river. We see, we saw it as a unit, and that whole area as a unit, and the bridge, the unifying element between the two. So if you have cocktails in the Old Town and you have dinner over here, and you walk across the bridge and you go back for dessert, it was the idea to make a very interesting synergy for our people. So it was never really a worry of ours that, hey, we're going to exclude the historical district. Now, we're worried about it, what you're saying, you know, the shops, but the idea was really to create a synergy, and it was interesting because the, you know, it was the very question you're raising tonight. I went over and talked to the owner of Tucci's, who I thought might be somewhat concerned because there's new restaurants popping up on the other side of the river, soon there'll be a bridge to get to him by foot, and he said, you know what? Thing was absolutely brilliant, which you guys conceived. He said, I love it. I've got more business than I ever had. This idea of more restaurants being pounded down here is really good for all of us. It's creating the kind of business and stir and excitement that I really needed, and he said, it's actually, my business is doing great. So I figured if anybody was going to say anything about this, he'd be the one person that said, hey, you know, enough's enough, and you guys are killing us. But he's on the historical side of the, and I think he gets it.
Right.
So I think, I think all this in time, well, people come from other parts of central Ohio to come to this area to dine, to shop, and to be here, and the historical district is very important to us because, just because of the vibe of the old buildings, it's a neat place to go and walk through, so anybody coming to visit us may go to Bridge Street, but then I think they're going to want to go into the Old Town and experience that because it's so interesting. And when we originally came up with this concept with a bridge, it actually, in the town we visited, it really didn't go anywhere. It was sort of a shame. We came back, said that bridge idea across the creek, the river, was really exciting, but it didn't connect anything. And so what we're doing here is binding together two parts of our community, sort of a more modern area, which has a high amount of possible people who are going to purchase things on the old side of the town. So, you know, so I think in the end, this is going to really be valuable to both parts of our city. And we don't see it as one versus another. I see it as a unit, and we always had, from a design perspective, saw this as a unifying thing to tie the town together, and the bridge is going to be the, the pedestrian cycle bridge is going to be the perfect element to do that.
The challenge is to make sure there's something left on the other side of the river to come through. We've lost, I think, eight entities in the last several months, and so your concern is well-placed, and the thought needs to be fully vetted, and I appreciate you bringing it to the forefront.
Thank you. And as I said, I mean, we, my personal business has benefited from Bridge Street, so it's not, I totally agree, not one or the other, but just, you know, what are we doing, you know, what potential impact could it?
Right.
You know, as long as we have free parking, if you go to the Short North, you really don't enjoy it. You drive around and drive around.
Oh, it's awful.
You better either get the valet or your goose is cooked. With all those nice restaurants, not a great place to go.
Right.
So, I mean, there's a lot of solutions here that are going to be very positive.
Okay. Thank you, Linda, for coming in. Appreciate it very much. We will be revisiting this issue on October the 22nd. We are going to double back to a previous portion of our agenda. We are really privileged to have our friends from the Dublin City Schools with us here this evening. I know Dr. Todd Hooley, as I say, the Fine School Superintendent in the United States of America. We have several of our Board of Education members. We have President Scott Melody. Where was Scott? There's Scott. We have Rick Weininger. We have Stu Harris, Vice President Lynn May, former president of the Board of Education. I also see that we have Brian Kern. Where was Brian? He was right there in front of me. Brian's the treasurer and the CFO of the Dublin City Schools. So, Dr. Hooley, it is all yours. Take it away.
Thank you. Well, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Grooms, members of City Council. First off, thanks for allowing us to come here tonight and just talk briefly about Issue Five, our school issue here that's on the agenda. We really appreciate your time. We're going to take just a moment of your time to try to inform you about the tax ask that we have on the ballot November 6th. It's very important, obviously, in the leadership role that you have, that you have a clear understanding of the school issue that we're putting before our voters. Let me also just pause for a second and just say thank you. It is very evident through just watching here for the last few moments, you are obviously very thoughtful leaders, you're very dedicated, you're devoted to really searching and researching and understanding, so just as citizens, we want to say thank you to that. I'm not, I don't know if you hear that enough, but thank you for your leadership there. There's a PowerPoint I think you received in your Friday packet. We have it pull up in front here, and while there are certain components to this issue that will be an increase in tax, and we've been sharing that around our community here, what is driving us to the ballot is not a financial issue. We've been able to take our 2012 levy that was promised the last three years and extend it now six years, and we actually have room to go. It's really an enrollment issue, and I'm going to ask our CFO Treasurer, Brian Kern, to share a brief narrative about where we are from an enrollment standpoint right now in our public schools, Dublin City Schools.
As we talk about development, just hearing the previous conversations and the growth around the area, but also the great city of Dublin, it attracts people here and attracts people from outside, from all over the world. We talk about all the time, 100 different languages that we have spoken throughout there, but one of the big things is growth, is what's really driving, is like Dr. Hooley said, we've, over the last 10 years, we've gained approximately 2,700 students, and just think about that, there's approximately 600 school districts across the state of Ohio, and the average-sized school district is 2,700, 2,800. So we've gained a school district, and over the next 10 years, we're going to gain another 3,000 students. So, you know, another school district on top of that. So just those two alone, you're looking at the Upper Arlington District just alone, we're adding over a 20-year period. So with that, and then one question we always, people ask us is, when is it going to stop? So we looked at a long-range build-out report, and we've looked, we've gone all the way out to like, the top is around 20, 36, we'll top out enrollment around 21,000, and then slowly go down and kind of level off about 18,000. Just kind of give you a perspective, currently, we're about 16,100 students. Just some of the capacity issues that we have, over at Jerome High School, we have eight, I want to call them learning chalets. Some people call them trailers or something like that, but, so we have eight of those that are being used every period of every day. Penny and Dear Run both have them, and they're being used out there, too. 16 of our 19th schools by 2022 will be over capacity, and I think the most staggering thing is from an elementary perspective, in the next five years, we'll be 1,200 seats short. And, you know, one of the biggest things that we like to talk, show and talk about is, for example, Indian Run, where right now, we have three classrooms, 5th grade classrooms that have to walk over to cells every day, walk back for lunch, and just, it's not the most ideal learning environment for those kids. So, you know, the weather's been out nice lately, but it's going to get cooler, and it's going to start raining, and our umbrellas just aren't going to be enough to carry them back and forth, so.
I need to blame all of you because people continue to move to this wonderful city because of your great leadership, and you continue to attract and refine and make Dublin one of the finest places, really, not just in or in central Ohio, but in our country. And so, as Brian mentioned, we have had children move from 100 different countries into Dublin City Schools in the last 12 months. So Dublin is on the map from a global context, and we're out of space. And so the graphic that we've had here in front of you, and we've been sharing this graphic around, we've had, one of our main strategies is just to go into living rooms and share with people and answer questions they may have. But our Issue Five has three buckets, if you will, or three components, but altogether it's going to be one vote. When a voter votes, it will be either for or against. The combination here, there's a bond issue to build new facilities, there's a permanent improvement levy to improve or renovate our facilities, and I need to share just on that because that would be a new component. And I want to share, while we feel that we have a lot of great facilities, last week I had the wonderful opportunity, and Councilwoman DeRosa, Mayor Peterson, you joined us at Scottish Corners for a 30th birthday party, also, I think, at Wyandotte for a 30th birthday party. You're all invited in the next couple of weeks. October 25th, Davis is going to celebrate its 30th. So we have a lot of buildings that are continually, like our homes, growing a little bit older, need a little TLC. And so the permanent improvement allows us to renovate our facilities. And then the best part about this, and I have to give our Board of Education massive kudos, as well as our Treasurer's Office with Brian Kern's leadership, this is thoughtfully timed out, and there's a reason we're on now, when we're a little bit underwater with our student enrollment and not on a couple of years ago, but we have a series of bonds that are rolling off. Milletage is set to roll off. At the same time, debt structures have been thoughtfully planned out so that we can do all of the bond issue and all of the PI without raising any taxes upon our citizens here. And again, the strategy, the intent here of our board to time this up and to make sure that what we need is approached with our citizens with financial care, again, major kudos to our Board of Education and our financial leadership for this thoughtful ask. The operating dollars are new. Again, that would fund the new staff in these facilities. We also want to add some mental health and some drug and alcohol supports to our students. The issues of our country do not, are not kept out by the Dublin bubble, and so we need to continually protect our students and support our students who have challenges with depression, with anxiety, and that's a growing group in our school district here. But then finally, again, on that operating, that would be a new amount, and you can see the numbers listed there, and again, for our voters, they will go in collectively to vote either for or against Issue Five here. We're blessed and fortunate to have some great leaders from our community here. I want to briefly introduce Steph Pappish, Becca Mayer, and Katie O'Neil. They are the three leaders of our Good Schools Committee. Their efforts have been tireless. I mentioned we are having literally over 100 coffees, I think, last night, Katie, you said?
We had 50.
We had 50 last night, and that's really in about the last two weeks. And so we're going into living rooms, we're going into homes. If any of you would like to attend a coffee or host a coffee, please let us know. Our passion is to inform our voters, and on the small card that's here on the back, and I don't have my glasses, and I apologize, I see some of you do, there's a website, and that website continually is updated. Every time that we have a community coffee, we take questions that were answered and put them on this website because, again, we're passionate that people go out and vote because that's the right thing to do. We're passionate that people vote informed on Issue Five, and if they vote and vote informed, then the will of the people will ultimately be determined on November 6th. So with that, I'd like to conclude my comments and invite from our Board of Education, Mr. Stu Harris, to come up and make some comments as well. Stu?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hooley. So Mayor Peterson, Council, along with my fellow board members, our President Scott Melody, Rick Weininger, and the longest-serving president in the history of Dublin City Schools, Lynn May. So we're here to say thank you and talk about our partnership and collaboration that we've had as a city and as a school board. And so just tonight, we had our board meeting as well, and we celebrated with our National Merit Scholars. We have 32 National Merit Scholars, more than any other district in Ohio. And all of those students would be going to the top universities and colleges in the United States. This isn't the first year. This has been several years in a row. And I'm not going to go through all of the highlights because you all know it, because you all live it, you live here, your children go to school here. I will note that our Treasurer, Brian Kern, tonight received the Auditor of State Award of Distinction for fiscal responsibility and doing a great job with the Treasurer's Office. Again, not the first time that Brian in his office has received that award. And so Dr. Hooley talked a little bit about the Wyandotte Elementary 30th Anniversary, where that's our most recent national blue ribbon school. The mayor and several of you were there to help us celebrate, and because of this partnership and collaboration between the city and the schools, we, the Dublin School Board, were fortunate to nominate and to give to Mayor Peterson the Ohio School Board Association Friend of Education Award, and I know that's prominently displayed in the Peterson household.
It's right next to my bed, Stu. I tell my wife every night when we go to bed.
So just to wrap this up a little bit, that partnership and collaboration has never been greater than it has been now, and that's because you all, the city of Dublin, and we, as the Dublin City Schools, know that our goal is to get our students ready for the jobs of the future and keep them safe in our buildings. Three things that you have helped us with that we do, one, the Emerald Campus, those are the jobs of the future, the STEM Academy, and your assistance with technology, Dublink, and our one-to-one Chromebooks, where we're going to put a computer into the hands of every middle schooler and high schooler, has been outstanding. And then, most importantly, our school resource officers, our Dublin police officers, who are part teacher, part counselor, and part law enforcement, keeping our students safe in these buildings. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Lynn May, and once again, thank you very much.
Yep. We have a lot of good stories, friends. And when you mentioned about the napkin, I remember a few years ago, one of your former city council people and Stu and I met, and up with a napkin, we drew out what it might look like if the schools work with the city and help develop what has become known as Bridge Park. So that was a very good relationship, obviously, and it's really exciting to hear about what's going on tonight. I listened very captivated, so thank you. Everything that we do as a school board, we don't do for you all, though. We don't do for ourselves. We do for our children, the children of this community, and that's why we truly appreciate your support. And what is our ask tonight? We ask for your continued support as we go forward these next few weeks, and the way that we can get the resources to educate our students, the economic component of this, we just ask for your support because it's going to take all of us. So thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Lynn. Scott, anybody else want to, anybody else want to jump in? Rick? Doc, anything else? You good? Well, thank you for coming in. I don't know that people realize, your meetings and our meetings are on the exact same Monday nights. I don't know how that happened, but it's very difficult to get to each other's meetings, so we're really happy that you were able to come in and join us. I know you took time off early from your meetings that you could be here. So the school system that you all have managed to build here, you know, we heard from our library system, and we heard from our doublers, and then Scott Dring and the Convention Bureau, it never ceases to, just blow me away, the quality of people that are in this community that are operating at a level of professionalism that just is not, is very, very difficult to attain, it's very difficult to maintain, and it's not very common for people to reach that level. And there are so many reasons that people come to Dublin, but the number one, and I go out and speak to different businesses and companies that are here and companies that are thinking about coming here, and the number one question they have are, what are your schools like? They want to know, what are the schools like? Because that's where their kids are going to be educated, and it is a real barometer of the quality of the community, what are your schools like, and what are people willing to invest in their schools? So it attracts businesses, it attracts the workforce that fuel those businesses, and it drives our economy, and it maintains our property values, and there's so many different important things that the school system does for us, and when we, as a city, and you work together, it's just so much even more powerful. And I mentioned at the, at one of the school events we were at last week, that I sort of see the city as providing a skeleton. You know, we provide the roads and the sewers and the, you know, the infrastructure, but it's really the school system that provides the heart and soul of a community, where you can really get your, you find your identity, and it's you find it in that school system. And what you have been able to provide to our kids is really phenomenal, and I agree with Lynn when you say that we're all doing, and Stu, that we're doing this for our kids and the next generation. I have two, I have a freshman and a senior at Kaufman now, and my daughter gets up and goes to the Emerald Campus, Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, and it is, it is like she has already stepped through the high school experience, and she is in college, and now she's chomping at the bit to get to college and get through that, and then she's going to go on to law school. So I got, I got a lot of talking to do to her to get that cleaned up. But the opportunities that this school system provides to our kids, which then translates into all the other valuable things that are going on, and this graphic that you have here, Doc, is really, it's very telling. I mean, that sort of tells the story when you look at it, that there's no new, so taxes wouldn't be going up at all to fund two of these three buckets, and you look at all that you're going to do with those two buckets and all of the buildings you're going to build and the, I mean, you sound like Dana over there, always talking about the bricks and mortar and then maintaining those things and keeping them functioning, that you can do that with those two buckets, and then you got to have people in them to teach to teach. So that's where the third bucket, I guess, comes in. So it's a pretty powerful, it's a pretty powerful message. Is there anybody, I'm sort of filibustering the conversation here. Is there anything else from Council? Mike?
Yeah.
Anything else? Kathy?
I just wanted to say thank you for coming tonight. You guys have a few things you're doing, right? So for you to spend some time here. I just wanted to say that it personally makes me incredibly proud to be part of a community that prioritizes education. And we do. And as the mayor said, prioritization only works if we all participate, right? I mean, if the schools and the cities and the libraries and the residents and the governments and all of the partners, that it, you know, it works because we collectively support and we individually reinforce, as you say. We all have a part to play. And I think that that's really important. As was noted earlier, I had the very good fortune to go to the 30-year anniversaries. It makes me feel old, because I am, I'm a Wyandotte mom, or my kids went through there. But I have to say, what was so nice about that is, it's been a little while for me, and we forget, sort of, I forgot. And then to get to be there and to see the energy and to see the terrific work that all the teachers and staff do to make sure that our kids are ready for their first steps so that they can take all the rest of those. And so, you know, I appreciate that opportunity, because that really, really does matter. So thank you for coming tonight. And the impact of prioritizing education in this community is the, I think, one of the most important things we can do. So I appreciate your support and for being here tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Anybody else?
I'd also like to thank your Good Schools Committee. Not only can Deb Papish mix together 90 cake mixes with 22 dozen eggs and make a cake that's identical to the Ohio Stadium and fund scholarships, but you guys are working incredibly hard to, you know, spread the message. And what a wonderful resource to be able to engage. So thank you for doing that. And thank you. I will now inform my son that they are educational chalets and not the math. So I'll be sure to straighten out that nomenclature in the groom's household shortly.
Just quickly, I just want to say, without a great school system, we will not have a great city. And you guys have done an awesome job. If you look at the kind of awards and things, and you look at our young people coming back, and they're buying houses all over Dublin, and I mean expensive homes, and they have really good jobs, and that was a reflection of all your hard work. So thank you very much.
And Christina couldn't, Jane?
No, I have to jump in the bandwagon, because I've had 10 kids and grandkids go through the Dublin Schools. And what I want to say to you is, you're right, you can't have a great city without a great school. You can't have a great future without great kids. And this comes from the great teachers and the work that you do every day, every day, as I watch my children grow and my grandchildren grow, and go off to college and come back and start a business, or grow their families and return to Dublin, and know that they were so well-prepared for life because of the schools. And because of the community that embraces them, and because of the services that we offer them and the support that we give them to grow and to be the kind of people that we all want our children to be. So from my heart, I have to say thank you. And I know that when you go out into the coffees, that the groundswell of other mothers who feel the same way are what will bring you to success, hopefully, in this levy and in the future, whenever we need anything to keep our children safe and healthy and strong and educated. So thank you for that.
Just one final thing. I did talk to Christina Aludo on my way in this evening, and she wanted to also pass along her appreciation and support and thanks for what it is that you're doing for our community and for our schools. Dana, would it be possible for us to pull together some statistics, some points, and pull together a resolution for our next council meeting that highlights why it is that the school system and the quality of the school system is so important to what we're doing, what you're doing, what your economic development team is doing, so that we could pass something that sort of highlights that fact?
Certainly, we can bring that forward on October 22nd.
Do I need a motion for that, Jennifer? Okay. All right, great. You can pull that together, and then we will revisit that issue on October 22nd.
Thanks for coming out.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you.
One last thing.
Yes, sir.
We're very proud of Emerald Campus, and the next Dublin Chamber of Commerce after hours will be at the Emerald Campus. And I know most of you have already been in the building, but you're certainly invited to come over to that chamber. It does a great job, and I think it's the 19th. It's the next, it's the next one.
Of October.
Of October.
Great.
So you're invited over. There's some.
Fantastic. Great. Thank you very much for coming in. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
We'll give them a minute to collect themselves. Okay, moving on to Resolution 62-18. Ann?
Sorry, I think.
Wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
71-18, possibly?
71-18.
Authorizing the city manager to execute an assignment of a real estate purchase contract and other necessary documents to acquire a 28.84 acre, more or less, fee simple interest for three parcels located on Iderman Road from the Robert Wyler Company.
I'll introduce it. Donna?
Good evening, members of council. May I? There we go. Good evening, members of council. Before I get into the details of the proposed acquisition, I'd like to take a moment to provide a bit of background on the Shire Rings Road Technology Flex District. As one of the city's key business districts, this area is predominantly comprised of light industrial uses and forms a physical connection between the Emerald Corporate District that Rings Road 270 and the growing West Innovation District. Shire Rings Road provides a direct east-west connection between these two districts while providing access to single-family neighborhoods to the south. Large undeveloped parcels within the area provide important opportunities for new businesses and/or expansions of existing Dublin businesses. In February 2016, to promote economic growth in the area, council authorized the purchase of approximately 79 acres on Shire Rings Road, which you'll see here highlighted in blue. And currently, availability exists to acquire three contiguous parcels outlined in yellow that total approximately 28.84 acres. As a result of this adjacency, acquisition of these parcels brings about an opportunity to leverage the existing city asset and increase the likelihood of a broader development strategy, as a result of a gaining approximately 1,500 feet of highly visible frontage along US 33, also gaining approximately 1,000 feet of highly accessible frontage along Iderman Road, and finally, amassing a total of approximately 100 vacant acres. In our experience with site selectors and based upon cluster-based economic development strategies, the availability of developable acreage in this area is advantageous in order to recruit companies wishing to locate in proximity to the growing industry clusters surrounding the northeast 33 corridor. For example, and you saw this slide earlier in Begon's presentation, with this acquisition, the city has the opportunity to leverage its existing industry base in both the automotive sector, which you'll see here in this slide, as well as the growing healthcare and bioscience sector. With authorization to acquire the property, further study will proceed to determine strategies to take maximum advantage of the expanded site and further secure the city's position as a preferred location for business growth within central Ohio's broader regional clusters and effectively compete in the regional economy. Purchase price of the three parcels, again totaling 28.83 acres, is $4,263,000, or approximately $147,000 per acre. This land valuation is consistent with the range of current market values in the area as illustrated in this summary prepared by the Robert Wyler Company, showing an average price per acre of roughly $200,000 per acre. Funding to acquire the three parcels will come from the city's general fund balance, and the finance department will bring forward a supplemental appropriation at a future council meeting. However, staff is proposing to repay the general fund for this acquisition from the $500,000 annual allocation for land acquisition that is programmed as part of the capital improvements program. With acquisition of this property, staff will review existing plans for proposed infrastructure and roadway improvements to Shire Rings Road and Iderman Road to ensure cost-effective and efficient use of city-owned property and promote economic development in the area. With that, staff recommends that we authorize the city manager to proceed, and we seek your authorization to proceed with the acquisition. Glad to answer any questions you may have.
I will introduce it, Ann. I don't think I said that. Any questions from Council? We will see you back on October 22nd.
Is that the site where they were going to put the, we had the assisted living home or nursing home?
At one time, it was considered there. Yeah, well, actually, the original acres the city bought, the 79 acres was that site that you're referring to.
But it's near there. It's right across from the hospital.
Correct.
Is that it, Mike?
Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. We'll see you on the 22nd. Resolution 62-18.
Accepting lowest and best bid for the Bran Road booster station improvements.
I'll introduce it. Mr. Hammer Smith?
Members of council, this may sadden you, but this will be quite possibly the last bid acceptance resolution you consider this year from engineering staff. So regarding this resolution, it is.
I haven't stated, Paul. I don't even.
I know. I'm back to tears.
Paul, you just ruined everybody's night.
What?
So you've considered actually nearly 20, but considering this resolution this evening, this is for the Bran Road Water Booster Station located at 4751 Bran Road, which is at the corner of Bran Road and Dublin Road, the southwest corner. On September 25th, we opened three bids for this project. The improvements include the replacement of the existing three pumps within the booster station, the control panels, and then some painting. Alternate one that was also bid is for pavement resurfacing on the entire site. The engineer's estimate and the budget for this project were $570,000. The project will start this year, and we expect it to be completed June 1st of next year. There will be no interruption of service, water service during this project, and it will result in more reliable water service and improved efficiencies with the new pumps. The Peterson Construction Company submitted the lowest and best bid for the base bid and alternate one of $353,640. They do very well at this type of work. We checked their references. They had very favorable references. And staff recommends that we award the project to Peterson Construction Company, no relationship to the mayor, for the base bid and alternate one for $353,640. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions?
Have you, the fire department's aware of this in terms of, could it impact their ISO rating?
Yeah, they will be.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Ann?
Mr. Keenan, Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul. Final plot, Arlington Village Lot Number 15. Claudia, you're not Claudia. I thought I saw her here.
I am indeed not Claudia. Sorry to disappoint this evening. Good evening, mayor and members of council. Before you this evening, as mentioned, is a request for acceptance of a final plat. A final plat is the final step in the subdivision of land. A final plat creates property lines. It also delineates easements as well as building lines. Planning and Zoning Commission reviewed this request at their August 23rd meeting. They approved the amended final development plan associated with this application and recommended acceptance to the city council this evening. The site is located on the south side of Cabellstone Lane and is an existing single-family home. The parcel is approximately .3 acres in size. The request before city council is to replat a single lot, Lot 15. As you can see, the request is to modify the front building line from 70 feet to 45 feet. You'll note that the entire subdivision plot on the left-hand side of the screen does demonstrate a significant varied setback in the subdivision, ranging from 30 feet to 75 feet at the greatest. The applicant is requesting the proposed setback line be located at 45 feet. This is in conformance with the preliminary development plan standards, which is the zoning requirement for a minimum front yard setback of 25 feet. Having found all the criteria met and the single condition by the Planning and Zoning Commission fulfilled, staff is recommending acceptance to city council this evening. Happy to answer any questions.
Will that damage any of the cadence of the other homes that are already in existence? If you have one, were all the rest of them at 70 foot?
No. So they vary, vary significantly. So their neighbor to the west has a front yard setback of 75 feet, and then their neighbor to the east has a front yard setback of 35 feet.
Okay.
So this is far in excess of what we typically see subdivision to subdivision.
Yeah, I was just worried that it might have impacted negatively the whole streetscape if one's way up and all the rest of them are way back. You're telling me they're all up and down?
I think this.
Can you put the aerial photo back up? I think that tells the story visually.
This site was visited by many members of the Planning and Zoning Board, and the gentleman, and you correct me if I'm wrong, he had twins. He needs more bedrooms. He's proposing, if I'm correct, to bring his garage out and turn it into a bedroom. So it's only an L part. It's along the side of the driveway. The neighbors know about it. No one's really complaining about it. We asked a whole bunch of questions, but it appeared as if it would fit in very well with what's existing on the cul-de-sac.
Any other questions? Thank you, Nicole.
Motion.
I make a motion that we approve the final plat for Arlington Village Lot 15.
Second.
Ann?
Mayor Peterson.
Yes.
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
And Mr. Keenan.
Report regarding Airbnbs. Is that you, Jennifer?
Yeah.
Wow. Okay.
At a recent council meeting, the issue of short-term rentals, such as those regulated or advertised by Airbnb, came up. Our office had previously drafted a memo almost a year ago, and you requested us to update it. So we provided an updated memo in your packet. And just in summary, the process that we followed was about a year ago, we got together a team of city staff. So we had representatives from city managers' office, development department, legal, and we identified some of the main reasons that we would want to regulate short-term rentals in the city. Some of the main kind of secondary effects that you get from short-term rentals include vandalism, code enforcement issues, noise issues. And the evaluation was that there are other ways of getting to that short of regulation. You may know that City of Columbus adopted legislation regulating short-term rentals, and basically, it's a registration system. City of Columbus is one of the most popular kind of sites in the state of Ohio. We've monitored the listings in City of Dublin on Airbnb. Last time, we counted 10 properties. On VRBO and HomeAway, we had three advertisements, and those were actually four hotels. And so at this point, staff's recommending that you not develop regulation, kind of permitting these, because the demand just isn't there yet. But we want to continue to closely monitor it and bring you updates as to whether that legislation should become necessary in the future.
Questions from Council. Chris?
You know, I understand that the demand may not be there, but being a person having lived on a street that a house was a verbo rental, it was incredibly disruptive to the neighborhood. And you have a sense in a neighborhood that you know your neighbors, and when you bring in, you know, we would have, every time there was a soccer tournament, every time there was something going on in the city, we would have a house on our street that would house 12, 15, 18 people. The gentleman that lived next door had a swimming pool, and it listed the mere-filled amenities to swimming pools and things of this nature, and they assumed it was the neighbor's pool, and he would wake up and. pool, and he would wake up in the middle of the night, and there would be people swimming in his pool. And my kids were much younger at this point, you know, at that point in time where they were still riding their bikes up and down the street, and the cars that would come, you know, we're at the end of a cul-de-sac, and the cars would come down and race around the end of the cul-de-sac. I don't know if I'm willing to wait until we have a problem to start some legislation. I think, I think it might be more appropriate to be proactive about it, not that we would have to send our officers out there to, you know, monitor it, but at least we would have a tool in the toolbox that we could get out and use if there was an abusive case of this kind of, rather than kind of, rather than to be viewed as a community that was spot-zoning, right, to try to deal with a single entity that popped up. I'd be more inclined to have some policies in place that if their trigger were to happen, that they would be required. I just know for our street, it was incredibly disruptive, and, you know, you have a, particularly if you have little children, you have a sense of who's in your neighborhood and who's walking around. And in Muirfield, we have the Muirfield paths, right, and they come out onto the streets, and you would know who was coming and going and if your kids were outside playing. And, and that was really, that sense was removed from our street because now we had essentially a commercial use in our residential district. So that's my two cents. I don't know how the rest of you feel.
I have a question about that, that commercial use in a residential district. Is that one of the ways that you can control this?
So basically, if there is rental of a property, as long as it's used for a single-family use, we don't look at kind of the funding mechanism or the financial transaction, so rental versus owner occupied. For short-term rentals, because of the potential impact on the community, you can have the licensing, and that's what Columbus does. So you can require a permit, and then that permit could be revoked if there are certain behaviors that are demonstrated, such as excessive parking, excessive noise, vandalism, code enforcement violations, those sorts of things.
There's no way to control it without legislating a permit. There's no way to send an etiquette letter of, to Airbnb providers, that the city does not presently have regulations, but the expectation of this community are...
Well, what we've tried to do in the past is when we've had homes, rental homes that have been identified as, and they've been more code enforcement-type issues, actually having code enforcement reach out to that property. And that was the mechanism that we were proposing to continue to deal with those rentals in the near term.
Did it work for you? Did it, did it settle the problem? Did you find, because ten is so few, did you find that when you had a problem, that you could solve it with code enforcement?
So I'll defer to code enforcement because I wasn't involved. But oftentimes, if you reach out, and I know we're, we offer to meet with communities where they have large numbers of rentals in their property, those are more long-term rentals, we can talk about some of those secondary effects and who they can reach out to at the city to take care, help address those problems.
Okay. Do we have sort of any, I don't want, policy is too strong of a word, to Jane's point about expectations and standards, is there a way to do this that these are the standards of activity? I don't know if I'm being very articulate here, but I, I mean, we don't have anything per se on our, on our website even today that discusses this, right?
Right, not to my knowledge. We could work with community relations and the planning department and develop something and send it to the properties who are listed, and these are our expectations, and, you know, here are the numbers to please contact, offer to meet with residents, you know, we can have an outreach if that's something you'd like to do first before pursuing legislation.
You know, so there's these Airbnbs, I guess, that are on like on the, on the website.
Mm-hmm.
You can go, is it common, I just don't know the answer to this question, is it common for people up in Muirfield to rent out their homes during the tournament?
Yes.
And if they're, so if they're not on a website somewhere and we started forcing this, let's say we pass some kind of, I get your point, Chris, I agree with it, but if we pass some sort of a regulatory action and we go after these Airbnbs, how do we then not also go after the people that are renting it during the tournament? And now aren't we just opening a Pandora's box?
Exactly.
Never going to be able to put back in the box?
Exactly, and we mentioned that in the memo. If we had legislation, we would have to apply it uniformly, and, for example, Columbus is, anyone who rents for fewer than thirty days has to get the permit. So if you rent it for one night, you would have to get a permit.
So maybe it's more of a non-legislative, like a policy thing. If people complain, maybe there's something we can send them that sort of explains what we expect, although we don't really necessarily have a regulatory hammer.
Right.
So what do we want to do? Do we want to ask them to develop this policy, or do we want to...
I think one of the ways around that is, you know, City Columbus is less than thirty days. If we wanted to get out of the Muirfield Village, we would make it more than seven nights a year, and that would eliminate many of those things. I, I understand all of the hesitations, but until it comes to your street, I think you've had some issues in...
Oh, absolutely. No doubt. I know what you're...
It is, it is incredible.
It's disruptive.
And really, there was no solution to this. The only reason it ended is there was a divorce that resulted in sale of the house. That's, that was the only...
Is there any of our committees we could refer this to?
Community Development Committee might be the most appropriate.
At least have them talk about it.
And I don't know if folks agree to, to pull together, what is our standard sets of expectations, because we would probably want that as the first step anyway, right?
Well, and the problem, the people who are violating our standards probably won't care if we tell them what our standards are.
But the residents around the neighbors would, is my point, is that... We tried fire code issues because you'd have four families that would go in and they would rent the house, and every family would get a bedroom, right? And that's how, and then all of a sudden, you had, you had six or seven, eight cars, and you had twenty, twenty-five people, and, and they were going to sit out in the driveway and have a few cocktails and, you know, tailgate before their kid's soccer game and...
Yeah, part of this too is very interesting because there's house-trading organizations, and I don't know we're going to tax those or not, but I've traded my house for houses in Yellowstone National Park on the edge of it, Innsbruck, Austria, you name it, chateaus in France, and it's a fair trade, and they're very proper, and they come in and take your property, and you take theirs, you get their car sometimes. It's really a wonderful exchange, very professional. They leave you all the names of the best restaurants, so that sort of enters into this too, and I don't know if that's a taxable thing or not, but, you know, because there's professors who come here to see their kids graduate, and they want to trade houses for their house in Saudi Arabia or whatever for a week, and so it's something else to consider in this.
I suggest you send it to a committee just to talk about. I think it requires a little discussion.
I make a motion that we refer this issue of the Airbnbs to Community Services Advisory Committee.
What, are we doing CSEC? We're doing Community Development.
Community Development Committee.
Second.
Anne?
Mr. Rosa.
Yes.
Ms. Fox.
Yes.
Mr. Reiner.
Yes.
Mr. Keenan. Vice Mayor Amros Grooms.
Yes.
Mayor Peterson.
Yes. Okay, thank you, Jennifer. Dana, staff comments?
I only have one, one item, and we had put a pretty extensive memo in your last packet about this, and that's the closure of the roundabout at Riverside One Sixty-One for October nineteenth, Friday, October nineteenth through Monday, October twenty-second. The backup plan, if we are caught by weather, will be the following weekend. We've initiated a lot of communication on this. We'll plan to keep that pretty aggressive communication plan out there. Paul is going to be doing a News and Ninety this next week on this. Also, we've brought back the kids who did the, if you remember the first roundabout video we did, we were bringing them back as a sequel, and they're a couple of years older now, and probably pronounce their Rs better, I don't know, but it won't be the woundabout, but it'll be the roundabout probably. But we look forward to seeing that and getting that out there. That's all I have.
Hey, Dana, so there, you're not really changing the movement through. It's more signage, is that correct from what I understood?
There's signage, pavement markings. We will be changing the configuration of the actual roundabout. It's actually not as round as you think on the, on the south end, and most of what we're addressing is on the northbound approach into the roundabout. But in order to make that happen, we've got to shut it down because we've got to do, we need to fix those things I just talked about, put in some new signage, but we also need to grind down the pavement and then repave as well because to get all the lane markings correct, we need to do that. Did I hit it all, Megan, or...
I guess my question is sort of, do, do we need to warn drivers as they approach this that, that the lane movement has changed?
Oh, yeah, we'll be doing, for sure, be doing that.
So what, so the plan would then be what, flashing signs when you're coming up, saying, pay attention, change? Yeah.
Yeah, the most notable changes are actually changes in the lane assignments in that northbound direction. So the lane assignments are actually changing, which results in only two lanes going through the circulatory area of the roundabout. So that's the focus of the new kids, kids memo or kids video that was just released. They talk about the new lane assignments, so that, that's really the focus of our advanced communications, and then we'll also have signage out there.
Yeah, because most people won't see that.
The permanent signage gets changed, the striping changed, yeah, all that stuff gets changed, and there'll be messages out there.
So, so when you're coming in, if you're, if you're in the right two lanes, yeah, said in north, if you're in the right two lanes, and you don't know it, and you're going to want to go left...
Yeah, the, the future configuration is the far-right lane will be a dedicated right. So that right lane, there will no longer be the three lanes entering into the circulatory area, so that right lane will be a dedicated right, which we believe to be the most impactful.
So up that way, we just need signage to say, pay attention, lane assignments have changed, because it's challenging enough with, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a median, is there any kind of a small divider or median for the right lane that's dedicated to separate it from the two lanes that go?
It'll be a striped area for now.
It's just striped.
We want to monitor, and then long-term, there's a potential that we'll add a raised median there. We want to make sure it's settled.
And what's with the, we, when the, when we had the issue with the, whatever it was underneath the roundabout, and we lost those beautiful trees, are they coming back?
Oh, the trees that were in the middle?
Yeah, that was so beautiful, and then they had to be removed because we had all that reconstruction repair to do and...
Our park operations staff actually has been working over the past month or two. Matt could probably speak to that better, but they've replanted some of the trees. They aren't as large as the original ones were, and I believe they put back some of the turf. I'm not sure exactly what's left, but they've been working to restore that area. They were, they were really waiting on the fall planting season to address that.
But it'll go back to the original design? Will it go back that way, or no? Just not as large?
Yeah, yeah, the trees that were originally planted were so large, they required a crane operation to plant those, so I believe they went with some smaller trees. Well, Sean's there, too.
That's all I have, thank you. Okay, council committee reports, PNZ. Jane?
I don't know, I was on vacation. No, we didn't have one, but I was on vacation.
Well, that, those are all good things. Admin, Chris?
Nothing to report other than we've been working with city manager's office about the staffing and taking in the meeting minutes from the boards and commissions and what's that's, what that's going to look like. So I think we're worked through that, and I think you'll see the result of that in the operations budget that'll be coming forward.
Thanks, Chris. Community Development, John?
We're going to have a meeting soon as Anne gets us all coordinated on this thing tonight, and I know Kathy has some items of interest she wants to bring forward, so we'll get a, something put together here hopefully in the next two or three weeks.
Thanks, John. Finance, Mike. Public Services, Christine is not here. Coda, Kathy?
Yes, thank you. Board meeting, you may have seen the article in the Dispatch today that Coda's embarking on really their first major strategic plan that they've had as an organization. And as we had a very quick overview, but very helpful overview today about all the things that are going on in the community, it really is mind-boggling about both the opportunities, but then again about the challenges of bringing it all together. So I'm happy to be on that and certainly represent Dublin and the work that'll happen. The other thing, just want to remind folks that Coda offered this CPAS program, which was the offer from corporations and organizations to fund bus passes for their employees to remove traffic downtown. The numbers have been staggering, they just continue to go up and up and up. There's over three hundred employers now doing that, and over thirteen thousand riders have taken advantage of that, and we clearly see that. So that's one example of the community working together and figuring out how to, how to think about mobility. So interesting, and I'll have lots to report as we move forward. Thanks.
Thanks, Kathy. Community Found, Dublin Community Foundation, Chris?
We had our first cycle of grant request hearings on the, October the fourth. We got halfway through the grant cycle, and the balance will present in our next meeting, and I will bring back to you with the recipients of the, who the foundation elects to give grants to.
Morpsy, Chris?
We had our executive committee meeting on October the fourth, and it was largely the review of our executive director, which was very helpful in ways that we can be more effective in reviews, so it's going well.
Logan Union, Champaign County Regional Planning Commission, Kathy?
I'm nothing, thank you.
U.S. Thirty-three Innovation Corridor Group, Kathy?
We're meeting Friday.
Dublin Arts Council, John?
Sunday, be there for the bread festival. Starts around twelve o'clock. We'll have liquid bread, AKA beer, and real bread.
Be there on Sunday. What time does it start?
Around twelve.
Twelve, Kaufman Park.
Lot of entertainment, it's going to be great.
Board of Education, Christine is not here, she did not report anything. Washington Township, Mr. Richter, you got anything to report? All right, well, I have something for you, though. I'd like to recognize the firefighters who serve our community. Every October, the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation sponsors the official national tribute to all firefighters who died in the line of duty during the previous year. This memorial weekend was October sixth and seventh. Governor Kasich authorized flags. We've flown at half-staff yesterday in all public buildings and grounds throughout the state in honor and memory of the brave men and women who have lost their lives in the line of duty. We join in remembering them and offer our sincere condolences. Please pass along our best wishes to Chief O'Connell. We'd also like to recognize and offer gratitude to the brave men and women with the Washington Township Fire Department who served to protect the residents of Dublin every day, day in and day out. And Dublin City Council, we, we've played, what did we play? We played dodgeball? And now we're maybe, not well, we didn't dodge many balls, but we will be, along with the Dublin City Schools Administration and the Board of Education, at the Dublin Kaufman Football Game this Friday. I will point out Kaufman, I believe, is six and oh, and climbing the ranks of the highest-rated football teams in the state of Ohio. We will be there to pay our respects to the first responders, and that includes not only the fire department, but also the greatest police force in the United States, Lieutenant Price. So thank you to both of you for everything that you do for us every day. Council Roundtable, Jane?
Tomorrow evening is the Historic Design Workshop at Dublin Community Church at six thirty, and I bring this up because I, I hope that anyone who's watching, and I know everybody watches this.
They do.
That, that...
Especially at ten-thirty at night.
Yeah, especially at ten-thirty at night. But, but I also want to mention, and because we had, Linda brought this up because of the historic district, that we, as the council, have to be sure that we balance our focuses on both sides of the river, that the historic district gets the attention that it needs, that, and in asking Scott about what's needed, sometimes just by having these conversations, which we're going to have many, many more of, with groups down in the historic district, to find out what it is that can energize it. It is, it is not necessarily that we have to throw money at it, as maybe as we just have to throw ideas and conversation and make sure that we're doing whatever we can do to bring that kind of vitality that naturally occurs down there. But one thing that I would mention, and that I, I heard this week, as we talk about lots and blocks and how we lay out these streets and these sorts of things, we are having a backup with the valet in front of the avenue with the fact that the street is narrow, and if you get four or five or six cars, you literally back up the entire street all the way down High Street. So as we go forward, we cannot ignore the fact that we must serve the buildings that we built, right? And we have to make sure that in this mobility study, that we pay attention to the fact that we're going to have e-bikes on the street. We are, because they're everywhere downtown, and we're going to have more bikes, and if we really, if we create the walkable community that we say we want to create, we're going to have people all over the street, not just the cars. So we have to really pay attention when we see these things come through. So that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Jane. Kathy?
Yes, thank you. We heard earlier about our opportunity, Mayor, Vice Mayor and I, to go to the thirty-year anniversaries of some of the elementary schools, and that, that just warms your heart. And not only are they thirty years old, but as we talked a little bit earlier tonight, the, the North Pool is, and so I wanted to thank, I think over eight hundred residents have shared their opinions and thoughts about, you know... thoughts about, you know, how to prepare for the next 30 years and attended a couple meetings. And so I wanted to thank staff for their work on that, and for the residents who attended that, for that feedback. And then, and I don't know, Mayor, if you were going to do this, but I wanted to congratulate Dana for being recognized by Columbus Business First as among 200, 200, 2,000 in 18 of most admired executives. And Dana was in great company. We had, we had quite a few Dublin leaders represented on that. So congratulations, Dana.
Thank you.
Indeed. Is that it, Kathy? John?
I don't know if, a couple of weeks ago, there was an article that was sort of playing tribute to Bob Wyler in the business section on the Sunday paper. And if you read it very closely, you know, Bob had a great career, and he was, he developed Polaris with Bob Ekel and those guys, and then the new shopping center, 36, 37, a lot of really famous projects, and really interesting guy. But in the article, he did mention, he said, not very many people are familiar with one of my favorite projects, and it occurred in Dublin. And after all this, all these great things he did, and it was Asherton, and I think back on that project, and it had 14-foot mounds and lots of lakes. It was probably one of the only apartment complexes ever allowed in Dublin in an eight-year period. And there was very few of them that got through the planning and zoning department. But it was cool that he mentioned our project is one of the most memorable ones and one of the ones he was most proud of. So it was very neat. Then I just want to invite you all to the Blue Zone Meeting. I hope you show up on November 15th at 6:00 PM at the Dublin Recreation Center, because this would be a great thing if we could move towards this, our community, because our gift is giving health, safety and welfare, and this is a major health thing. And it says, "The Blue Zone communities have experienced drops in obesity, smoking, and blood pressure, among other health factors, and have saved millions of dollars in annual healthcare costs. The Blue Zone project has replicated their findings in cities around the United States. The Blue Zone's keynote event will help those interested to better understand what a Blue Zone community entails." So it'd be nice if we could stop in, learn about Blue Zones, and possibly get involved if it's a benefit to our community. And then the other thing I need to know from Jennifer is, when are the scooters coming? And when are you going to get that legislation written?
We are going to discuss that issue tomorrow night at CSEC.
Okay, let's, yeah. All right, thank you.
Thanks, John. Mike? Chris?
I just want to congratulate Megan and all that staff for the Snow Go Day. It was, it was, if weather cooperated, it was a pretty nice event for those guys to get geared up for snow removal season, although it doesn't feel like it today, it might by the end of the week.
I do have a couple, I usually try to not have anything, but a couple, a couple of important things. Congratulations, Dana, on your award. Very well deserved. It is always nice to see a person that deserves recognition get recognition. Mike, pink tie, compliments of Mike, Kathy's husband. Thank you very much to Mike, who lent me his tie. I do not have a stable of pink clothes to turn to, so Mike really helped me out. And on a more serious note, John, my deepest condolences to go out to you and your family in the passing of your brother Walt. There must be something that your parents do that instill a sense of community service in their kids.
Thank you.
Because you've been serving this, this community for decades, and I know Walt did the same thing in the Linden area, and he was recognized for that, and he passed way too young, way too soon. And I know he also, I think he was a Marine, or a, he was in the Army in Vietnam, was he not?
Yeah, he was a decorated military guy.
So he certainly gave well back to his community, and our deepest sympathies are with you and your family. It's a difficult thing to go through.
Well, thank you.
And then also, on, on another somber note, those of you that know Chai Weber, he passed away today.
Yeah.
Chai was a fantastic guy, and Mike, I guess Anne forwarded the, he did the storytellers thing back in 2016, and there's an article, if you can get your hands on this article and read it, it is just the essence of Chai Weber. He says here that his mother and his dad graduated from Dublin in 1907. 1907. And he was on, he served on the school, the Board of Education for two terms. Listen to this, General, you'll, you'll like this. He bought the land that Kauf, on Kaufman Road for Dublin Kaufman High School to be built, included part of what had once been his father's farm. We made a very wise decision in buying the land for about $1,500 an acre. But people could not understand why we need 50 acres for a school. You know, when I first had the privilege of being elected as mayor, I had not spent much time with Chai, but I'd heard a lot about him, particularly from Mike at goal-setting and things, he would always talk about Chai. So I, I called him up, and I said, can I come down and visit you? And he was, he's living down there, just down the street from where Dan is living now. And so I knew he liked feeding his birds, so I grabbed a burgos, bag of bird seed, and I headed down to Chai's house, and we sat for a couple of hours. I got there, he had a gallon of homemade ice cream sitting on his kitchen table that he made for me. And we sat down and ate that ice cream, and I was so captivated by this guy and the story. And he's so positive. He was just such a positive person. And my son was still at cells, and I was supposed to have gone and picked him up after school, but I, I texted him, and I said, get as many of your friends as you can and come down to this house. And he got about seven of his friends, and they came down. And Chai Weber sat with, you know that Dublin Coffee Book we have, Discover Dublin or whatever, that big book? He was leafing through that book and telling these kids stories, and they, you would have thought they were talking to Santa Claus himself. He was just so captivating. And he told me the story that he had built this bank where the Heartland Bank is now on the corner, and he put in a drive-through window, and they told him he was nuts. And he's like, no, this is, this is the greatest idea I've ever had. And he said the first person that drove through, drove through on a tractor. He thought, well, that may was such a good idea after all. But he was a wonderful guy and a fantastic asset for this community. He was here at the very, very, very beginning. He was here before the beginning.